We are live. Okay, good evening. I'm going to call the May 13th, 2021 meeting of the Highland Park Planning Board to order. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Star Ledger on January 29th, and to the Home News Tribune, also on January 29th. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet. And was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board indoors at Borough Hall. And has remained continuously posted as required by law. The public was also invited to attend and participate by way of a call in number and a password which we can make available. Jen, roll call please.
Ms. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Brusher?
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy? Mr. Hale?
Here.
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Kluger?
Here.
Mr. Lennaris?
Here.
Mr. Malay?
Here.
Mr. Nolan?
Here.
Mr. Pearlman?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
Mr. Constantine?
Here.
Here. Mr. Koch?
Here.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. So our, our first order of business is we have a
Madam Chair, you might want to acknowledge the fact that Ms. Hadhazy has
Oh, yes, I just, thank you. I didn't see that. So um, let the record reflect that Ms. Hadhazy is now also attendant, attending this meeting. Um, our first order of on our agenda is the, we have a consistency review of the downtown, the draft downtown redevelopment plan. We have received a fair amount of correspondence and some questions about some procedural aspects of this application. So before we actually get into our presentation by Jim Constantine, our planner, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Roger and he'll sort of go through whatever points were raised by the public and address those now. Roger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just introduce myself to the members of the public. I'm Roger Thomas. I am the Board Attorney. There have been some correspondence and I just wanted to address those. There's several issues. One is a question of jurisdiction. This matter is being heard by the planning board pursuant to section 26 of the municipal land, land use law. That is a referral power that is given to the planning board pursuant to that statute. And it indicates that in fact, there is a referral for any regulation that ends up coming to, into the borough and that is what this is all about. This is a regulation that is being reviewed and therefore it is appropriate to be reviewed by the planning board and that's what you are going to get to do tonight. This is a development regulation and it is, the purpose is to determine whether or not you believe as part of your requirement under the municipal land use law, to determine, and it's the language, it's stilted in my opinion, but that's neither here nor there, it's to determine whether or not there are any inconsistencies with this regulation in relation to the master plan of the municipality and if there are that to make regulations regarding those inconsistencies. So that is your charge. It is a fairly limited charge. It is what you are required to do. So it should be made clear that that's what you are doing. That's what you as the board are required to do. And the public should be aware that that is what this hearing is all about. There's also been some questions that have been raised with regard to communications. As a result of that, I have prepared a memo on behalf of the board. That memo has indicated, as I believe is appropriate, under not only the municipal land use law, but also the case law that governs the municipal land use law, that in fact, any communication that occurs or anything that is preliminary is not part of the record. The record is a term of art. It means that it is what happens at a meeting. This is a meeting. It is a public hearing. The record is made at a public hearing. Therefore, anything that is going to be considered by a board, in this case, the planning board, is to be considered only at the public hearing. Any communications that may have been forwarded previously, they were not distributed to the board members. They are not made a part of the record. They are not now a part of the record. If any member of the public has a desire, and this is what the memo indicated, if any member of the public has a desire to provide input in regard to a matter that's in front of the board, they have the right to do that. And the board chair and all the members of the board will certainly give an opportunity for that member of the public to be heard and heard in full. However, that has to be done at the meeting and in this particular case, as will be done with Mr. Constantine, who will be put under oath. Members of the, the public will also be given an opportunity and they will also be put under oath. That is not a punishment. It is just the way that things work. It is something that needs to get done. Excuse me. There is also a question that's been raised concerning whether or not this is jurisdictionally appropriate because of the resolution that was forwarded to you. I believe it was resolution 2021 dash oh one. And in that particular resolution, it made reference to the referral from the municipal council, I think is the actual term. And there's been some questions raised as to whether or not that's appropriate. It is clear from my understanding of the way this is all set up in the borough of Highland Park, that the governing body, the municipal council, the council, however you want to term it, is in fact the redevelopment entity and agency for the borough. Therefore, they are one in the same. Therefore, the, the resolution that indicates that you are getting this, this referral from the municipal, municipal council is the same as though it was referred to you by the redevelopment agency. The mere fact that it says Borough Council doesn't negate it. It is not even a ministerial deficiency in my opinion because the municipal, or the redevelopment agency is the Borough Council. So they are one in the same and therefore in my opinion, it is clear, excuse me, that in fact, that document is not deficient and the referral from that viewpoint is appropriate. I do know that there had been some people that had raised some questions. Madam Chair, as I had previously indicated to you, I thought that if anybody from the public would like to raise some points with regard to only the jurisdiction. Now, that's all we're talking about, the jurisdiction. I think there's, they should be given an opportunity to be heard and I'll be happy to respond to any of those concerns. So if, if, I don't know, Madam Chair, if you can see it or if we refer to Jennifer as to whether or not there are any people that have their hands up or electronic hands up that will in fact, like to be heard on, on the issue of jurisdiction, that is something that could be done now. I do see Alan Williams. I don't know, Madam Chair, if you wanted to recognize.
Roger, I was looking to see if anybody was, put their hands up.
Oh, oh, okay. And I
Do you have, yeah, Jennifer, do you have information about that?
I have one hand up.
That's okay.
If you could
I'm gonna lower my hand. Okay, good. Thank you.
Jennifer, if you'd be kind enough to, if they are on mute, could you unmute them? Or if, if they are not on mute, if that individual could identify him or herself, please?
Yes, if you could please identify yourself, state your name and address for the record.
It's James Nichols, 232 Harrison.
Yes, sir. Do you have either a comment or a question on the jurisdiction items that I have just outlined?
Well, I guess the question I have relates to by jurisdiction, do you include that your earlier comments about communications with the clerk with via electronic transmission of documents?
Yes, they include that.
So just for the benefit of the public and the members of the board, it was brought to our attention that the state adopted emergency procedures related to COVID and the regulation is N A C 5 colon 39 dash 14, which basically deals with procedural impacts of COVID and how they might adjust public meeting and the, and the conveyance of documents. So this provision basically seems to require that the board accept electronic transmissions of documents prior to the meeting, I think, kind of acknowledging the fact that in the context of COVID, it's impossible to physically, you know, bring those things to the meeting. So we, we raised that point and I just didn't know if you reviewed that regulation and if you if that affected your statement at all about that particular aspect of the jurisdiction.
Thank you, sir. I have reviewed the regulations. As a matter of fact, I have it right in front of me. In fact, it does, it does not change my opinion. The planning board is governed by the municipal land use law. Yes, it is. There are provisions that have been set out by the governor for this pandemic and emergency declarations. In this particular case, emergency remote meeting protocol for local public bodies. And that's the one you've referred to. It's NJAC 5 colon 39 dash one et cetera. And I have reviewed that. It is my opinion that that does not supersede the municipal land use law and the requirements of the municipal land use law in relation to the hearings that are held by a, by, by this municipal body, which is the planning board or the zoning board, which are governed by the municipal land use law. In fact, I have dealt with these type of hearings on numerous occasions over the last year and several months. There has been a provision whereby if anyone ends up having documents that they wish to present to the board, there is a mechanism that is available for that purpose and it is something that is presented in advance. And then if those documents are then presented to the full board during the course of the hearing, they can either be done by a share screen that is given over by the, I guess in our case, it would be Jen or somebody else to share the screen with an individual and then that document can be reviewed by the entire board at the hearing. Or in fact, that individual can ask that, that that document be shared by the person that is in charge of the meeting. And again, 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 in this case, it would be, my assumption is, is Jennifer Santiago. So I believe that we are fulfilling not only the spirit, but the exact letter of not only the municipal land use law, but also the regulation. So I continue to believe that what I have said in the memo continues to apply.
Okay, thank you. So Jen, is there anyone else that may have any comments or questions about the jurisdiction aspect? You don't see anybody?
No.
I do now.
Okay.
Matt, Matt, oh.
Yes, Alan?
Yeah. I'm not sure it's quite on target, but if the environmental commission had an opinion on an application, they would forward to the board, Jennifer would distribute it. Main Street has a definite opinion on the redevelopment plan that was sent to Kim and the board. The board has not seen it. In a sense, they're a quasi-board. They're a, a part of the, part of the borough, but not part of the government per se. Could you comment on that?
Certainly. I'm aware of that document. I've read that document. I believe that Jim has read that document. If they, I, I think, I'm not positive, Alan, but it may very well be that they will be present today to either summarize. It is a rather lengthy document. It's something for like 14 pages. I am hopeful that they're not going to read it, but nonetheless, they have the right to do that or they have the right to put their position on in, in front of the board tonight and either by a representative. And as is done in effect, as you well know, in terms of applications or other hearings, when the environmental commission ends up having either you as an individual representative of the environmental commission or other representatives to be present to give testimony with regard to their position on a particular matter. So the fact is, the fact is that if they are here tonight, they will be given a full and complete opportunity to be heard. So I think that the same thing applies to that entity as, and we are treating them exactly the same as we treat the other. And you're right, they're quasi-governmental agencies like the environmental commission, although that is a statutory commission, but be that as it may, it's the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
If Madam Chair, if there's no other, there is one other procedural element I'd like to get to. And that is, there's been an issue raised by someone, I don't remember who, the public with regard to Ms. Hadhazy. And Ms. Hadhazy, if you'd be kind enough to unmute yourself, if you can do that, please?
Yes.
You were kind enough to provide me with some information. It is my understanding and I'm going to summarize and anything that I say, I don't mean to put words on your mouth, so feel free, just like, frankly, just like my wife tells me all the time. She feels appropriate. So, so please feel free to do the same. But it is my understanding that in fact, recently, I think recently, but in any event, at the present time, you are involved in real estate sales as a real estate agent and or broker and that you are currently doing business not only in the Highland Park area, but also in the general area beyond Highland Park. Is that generally the case?
Yes.
And in fact, as a result of that, in an effort to try to, to establish a clientele, you sent out some marketing material which you provided to me. And maybe you, you would be better to describe that marketing material, who you sent it to, what it involved, and then I can comment upon it.
I, I would be happy to, if I can share my screen, I have images of that marketing material so that everyone can see what I'm describing, if that would be more helpful.
Yeah, that would be fine if you feel comfortable doing that. Jen, is it Jen, could you relinquish the screen over to Kaledra, please?
All right, that's where I need Terry. I don't know how to do that.
Terry, if you could do that for us, please?
I believe Kaledra, as a panelist, you should be able to, if you put your mouse or whatever device, there's a little green button at the bottom that says share screen. Do you see that? So if you click that, you can navigate to the images you're referring to.
Okay. Can everyone see this, what I'm sharing?
I can.
Yes, you're good to go.
Okay, great. Okay, so in 2020, towards the end of the year, I send out multiple marketing, different promotional items. What you're seeing on the screen now are some dish towels that I sent to about 200 residents in Highland Park specifically. Some are past clients, friends, neighbors, friends of past clients and also neighbors that I have yet to meet. So there are many people that were on the mailing list that I have never met and do not know, but that I would like to extend my services to as a real estate agent and broker. This is the bundle of two dish towels and they're tied with a navy blue sheer organza bow. And the card attached says, sometimes finding a great Realtor is easier than finding someone to help with the dishes. And these dish towels were mailed out around Thanksgiving. So it was sort of a play on the holiday that, you know, sometimes it's difficult to help people, find people to help with the dishes during holidays. And as you can see, I sent an abundance of these. I, you know, again, mailed them out to about 200 residents. And this is the packaging that it came in. Navy blue packaging with gold accents, which are the colors that I use for my company. And here's the tag. This is the front and the back. And the back just states wishing you a safe, happy and healthy holiday season. Have any real estate questions? Call me. I'm in town for the holidays. And that is all that the marketing material consisted of. Prior to this going out, or actually, I'm sorry, right after I sent this, I followed up this a few months, or a few weeks later, right before New Year's with a card that says cheers to 2021. And then on the other side, wishing a happy new year and again, offering my services as a real estate agent. The card reads, as changes come with each passing year, you can have peace of mind knowing that our crew of professionals will provide you with the highest level of service and support, no matter which direction life takes you. Your source for residential real estate sales and property management. And this was the former company that I worked with last year. I am now a broker and owning my own business. So I'm no longer with RE/MAX. This is another promotional item that I sent out at the end of 2021, which is, or 2020, which was the calendar for 2021. And I sent out also a monthly home maintenance reminder that was in with the, the New Year's card wishing everyone a happy new year. So that is the extent of the marketing material that I mailed in 2020.
Thank you, Kaledra. That's the material that you were sent to me. It's exactly the same stuff that I reviewed. And based upon, and it's my understanding that, as you've already indicated, this was, I guess you would call it a mass mailing, not particularly targeted. It was just to start to build, I guess, your new company. And it's, that's my understanding. So this was 200 people that you were hoping to, to get generally in the area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I, I don't see that this is a conflict. This is just a marketing. It has nothing to do particularly with the, the areas that are going to be discussed. It was not targeted to those areas. This was just a generalized marketing effort on the part of a member to build an outside business. So I don't see that there's any conflict either statutorily or any other way. So from my viewpoint, you can participate in this matter. But I do think it's important and I appreciate you and I know I, I mentioned to you that it is important to put these items on the record so that there is no concern or confusion. I don't think there's any, any issue here, but I think it's important to raise them and to bring them up. And you've done that and I thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Roger. Okay, so now that we have addressed some of the concerns, we're ready to move on to
Ken, I have one hand raised, David Cooperman.
Okay, um, so let's, let's, I guess, unmute him and then just make sure that this is again, still on a procedural matter.
Right.
And I guess, yeah, okay.
Yeah, hi.
You're unmuted. If you could state your name and address for the record?
David Copperman, 120 Hill Street. I'm very glad for the presence of Mr. Nichol and his representation of the comments that the Main Street has made on the downtown development vision that said, I'm quite confused now about the purpose of this meeting. If you're going to potentially allow the reading of a 19-page document, which is a critique on the plan and which I strongly commend to everybody here, I don't understand how that relates to the agenda item, which is comparison of the, or however you're putting it, of the vision with the master plan. The, the Main Street document is very directly on the downtown development plan to the extent, Mr. Nichol can correct me, but my reading of it is that to the extent that it is or is not indicative of consistency with the master plan, that's very much secondary to its purpose. So what y'all doing?
So I'm gonna, so I'm gonna just say at this moment that we, the board has not seen or received this document slash drawings or, or presentation that people are referencing that has come from Main Street. So I would feel more comfortable if after Mr. Nichol or someone from Main Street presents that, but then we would have conversations that revolve around it. I don't want to talk about things that we don't know anything about at this, at this time. The matter before, the matter before the board is the consistency review. And I, and I think Roger wanted to just get in front of whether there were some procedural matters. I don't, I don't know that what you're describing conforms to a procedural issue unless I'm missing something.
Okay, if, if I can just add, Kim, it may not, I, for my, for my own purpose, I would urge you to defer any vote tonight on this document, which you only got a few weeks ago, until you have read through what a very, very competent in my engineering and project management opinion, the document from these professionals would perhaps help open your eyes to larger questions of the master plan. I really commend it to you and would urge you to take the time before you render anything in the way of a, of an assessment or decision. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna just jump in at this time. And before we move on to the actual presentation by Jim Constantine, planning board planner and, and then what is going to be considered our consistency review, I'm just gonna sort of give a quick kind of overview of what's about to happen so that since, and maybe there are people from the public wondering sort of what the format of this evening is. So just to adjust expectation. So basically, we, the planning board are going to receive a presentation on the, on this, the consistency, well, we're going to receive the presentation on the draft downtown redevelopment plan. And in regards to its consistency with the master plan, there will be a time for the board to ask questions and make comments, which is typical. And then there'll be a time when the meeting is opened up to the public. And of course, this board does welcome public input. And so there'll be plenty of time for, for us to understand what, David, what you're talking about or what Main Street wants to comment on. But I think we should put things in the proper order, which would be to start with the actual review of, of the plan. And let the board ask their questions. And then again, we're, hopefully we'll move through things in a way that we have plenty of time for public comment and questions. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our planner, Jim Constantine, who will walk the board and the public through, through this redevelopment plan.
Mr. Constantine, as you know, this is a, a public hearing and I think it is appropriate that since this is in the nature of a presentation or a matter similar to an application, although it's not an application per se, I do think it's appropriate to have you sworn in. Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, so help be God?
I do.
And you are, and you are James Constantine. You are the planner for the Borough of Peapack and Gladstone, for the Borough of Highland Park.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. If you would be kind enough to, why don't you make your presentation? That's all I really have.
Sure. And I'm going to share a screen for this presentation. First of all, good evening, everyone from the planning board. Good evening, members of the public. Let me go to screen one and make sure that this is okay. So is everyone able to see the screen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay. So for, for many decades, Highland Park has recognized the need for significant sustained attention to the downtown business district. And over the past 15 years, the revitalization efforts have also focused on attempting to have redevelopment occur as a component of that revitalization and support for a thriving downtown. However, most of those redevelopment efforts, as envisioned in the 2005 redevelopment plan, had not come to fruition. So the purpose of this redevelopment plan, and it's stated upfront, is to take a more focused approach to jump starting the borough's goal of achieving downtown redevelopment and that implements very specifically the 2019 master plan, which I'll speak to this evening. It was extensive, sorry, not getting an advancement here. There was extensive community participation by hundreds of individuals in the 2019 master plan through community workshops, through an online survey, which worth noting, one of our survey questions, we asked people about whether they'd like to see downtown remain the same. And then we gave a choice of some changes and enhancements that could occur. And only 9% of respondents said they wanted to see downtown remain the same. So there was a real hunger among the community members that participated in the master plan to see change. And a number of things that they identified, these are a couple of pages out of the land use plan that specifically focused, I should just go back for a second. I wanted to say one other thing. I'm sorry at the beginning. So this specific redevelopment plan focuses on four tracts. We label them tracks A, B, C, and D. We label them tracks A, B, C, and D. And the upper left is track A, which is also referred to as the gateway redevelopment area, which includes a phase one that the planning board had actually declared an area in need of redevelopment with condemnation. And then several elements of phase two. One of those properties, Bergen Auto, is owned by the borough. Track B is a small property across the street that 13134 Raridan Avenue. Track C is sometimes referred to as the Borough Square, the existing farmer's market location. Again, that is entirely a borough-owned property. And then track D, which includes the North Third Avenue right of way, the former Blue House, Blue Horse property at the corner, and then some surface parking lots and one other building on Raridan Avenue is located at that, at that location there. You can see them mapped out here as well on this, this, this aerial. And you can see the relationships between tracks A and B, track C, a little further up, and track D. So speaking about the master plan, where we had extensive community participation, there were visions that you see pictured here on the right of redevelopment. There were comments from community members about the desire to see a town square or public space or daily gathering and special events, wanting us to more specifically address vacant properties, empty storefronts, high turnover of businesses, unpleasant stretches of the streetscape that present a sense of neglect. And very specifically, the area, whoops, didn't mean to advance that, sorry, where we were showing tracks A and B, which is right here, included a number of properties that were identified as potential infill redevelopment opportunities in the master plan. So there was a very specific, I'll say conceptual targeting that's trying to address many of these issues that the community identified. Community also indicated while they like green space, they don't like empty storefronts, and they felt there was a need to also address parking. Some folks indicated perhaps with one garage somewhere that might help strategically address parking issues. Some of the strategies that were in the land use plan element specific to downtown include the ones that are highlighted right here. This is a page from the master plan. And I won't read all of these because they're, virtually all of these are represented here in the redevelopment plan. But I thought I'd specifically refer to the one, two, three, fifth bullet, prepare a parking management plan that evaluates parking needs in relation to leveraging revitalization, infill and redevelopment by better managing on-street parking, rightsizing parking requirements to actual demand, encouraging cooperative and shared parking arrangements and permitting off-site parking as a strategy to develop smaller properties. So the, the essence of one of the strategies that's contained in this redevelopment plan, which you see indicated by the, the yellow rectangle on the right, labeled multi-level parking facility, is in fact a centralized parking structure that potentially could allow for smaller and more land-constrained or geometrically constrained properties, physically constrained properties to push, put some of their parking into a centralized location consistent with that master plan concept and allow for more effective redevelopment on those properties. So that's, I'm just trying to connect the dots on that. I should also indicate that the borough has issued on RFP at this point to hire a consultant to prepare a more comprehensive downtown parking management plan and look at a variety of, of issues more holistically, including potentially weighing in on some of the parking issues related to this redevelopment plan. And I think that was recently issued and the borough hopes to get that underway shortly. So back to looking at the specific tracks that I'd like to do is quickly walk through the concepts for each of the tracks and then touch on a couple of elements at a very high level related to the, the use bulk, design standards, and a couple of other provisions. It's an 84-page document. It would be much too difficult, I think, to try to go through that in detail. So I'll stay with the overall overview and then take questions that we can, I guess, go into specifics. So on track A, which is shown here on the left and that it includes several properties from, basically from the vacant parking lot next to the gunboat property down to classic cleaners, down to Ubreys and Bergen Auto fronting on Raridan Avenue. There's the new international market redevelopment nearing completion picture there. And this basically involves the idea of creating a gateway that would enhance the sense of arrival into downtown by infilling a new building that would have some selective additional height potentially as a way to help mark and denote that. And in fact, I'm going to shift over and show track B, which is just beyond the Venezuelan restaurant here. It's two properties that sit between that and the former Sunoco. And this property has been, in fact, it's already has a conditional redeveloper designated, has proposed a building that's similar in massing and scale to what's shown here. These are both five-story buildings that have a fourth, four stories along Raridan Avenue that sort of flank and create that bookend sense of arrival into downtown, which by the way, enhancing sense of arrival is one of the overall themes of the master plan and the reexamination plan element in addition to the land use plan element. And the fifth level is terrace back from the street. You can see we have some people set in there. We're also suggesting that in the design standards that there could be belt courses, horizontal definitions, where you can change the building mass or coloration and materials to lighten it, also potentially including sort of a tower element for a little additional accentuation. If I just step back to the existing condition, again, part of this is really using these two locations, phase one of track A and track B, to try to create that sense of arrival and gateway. The ground floor, we are very specific in the redevelopment plan to try to limit how much new commercial space is created so that we don't cannibalize what exists. However, we've expanded the range of uses and tried to allow for additional and wider range of retail service, entertainment, things like boutique hotel, remote working hubs, business incubators, creative maker space that all could be on the ground floor. It also could be amenities servicing upper floor residences. So there could be lobby space. There could be workspace that serves the residents above. There could be fitness rooms and other things that create an active street front but don't create additional commercial space. When part of the goal here is we're trying to, and these are also goals in the master plan, we're trying to add additional customer base with demographic segments who really desire to live, walk, shop, work, ride transit, as well as affordable housing mid-in here and doing all of that close to employment and education, which you can from downtown Highland Park. And those are all goals of the master plan in terms of this getting that, that density, it's not density for density's sake. It's to try to activate the street, revitalize and add enhancement to all of the businesses in the area and take what are, were identified by the community as really the darkest blocks downtown because of some of the car lots and the vacant, underutilized, obsolete properties in this stretch in through here and really add vitality back in. And that's a strategy that's being used by downtowns all over the country, by downtowns that are successfully revitalizing all over the world. So it's, it's not a unique recipe that's proposed there. As we move up the street to track C, which takes us beyond South and South Second and where they're looking at the borough-owned track just beyond here. And we do own the, the brick building that Main Street has its office in today. What's proposed here is a building that would act as a focal point terminating the vista, looking up the avenue, again, part of this sequence of arriving in downtown. This is a different, slightly different building massing as we depicted in these renderings. And these renderings are not the specific plans or architecture that would be built on these sites. These are really representing the massing that would, that is contained within the zoning and the bulk and design standards contained in this document, excuse me. So again, you see a four-story building at the street. There is a fifth level that terraces up, but back. You can see there's two wings, sort of a courtyard. And one of the, one of the design requirements for this particular tract is to actually provide for a small public plaza at the street that connects back through a mid-block courtyard, a garden courtyard that shared with the Reformed Church and the uses they have at the back of their property and sort of connects its way and allows for pedestrian passage and a different experience of spaces between Magnolia and Raridan. But again, at pedestrian scale, there would also include some parking and we know there's parking accommodations that need to be made relative to some of the act, the mix of uses that the Reformed Church has accessing at the rear. And all of that is contained within the standards for track C within the plan. As we move up the street to track D, we're now at the corner of North Third. That's the former Blue Horse on the left and Provident Bank. On the right, what's proposed here are a series of things. One is the creation of a public space on the North Third street, which would involve some texture paving and continuation of the curb grayed out so that it basically becomes a plain and a shared space concept. This is taking streets and making them more of a shared public space that can be used for particular access and pedestrian and vehicles driving in a very different way on them is especially happening right now coming out of the pandemic. More and more towns and cities are moving very quickly to try to take things that were experiments. And in fact, we do have an experiment with town tables on the South Third portion of the street here and making those permanent in some degree. And one of the comments that we did hear from the community was to try to make sure that there is enough permanent public space at this location. What you see pictured here is a rendering that shows potential relocated a farmer's market, which could occur on this block at certain times. We show a new building pictured on the left, kind of a landmark with a, a ground floor. Design standards call for lots of glazing. We, we think of a food use would be a great activator with outdoor tables. Again, it terraces back at the fourth level so that the, it is a five-story building. And the, the height that's used in these select locations, I did want to note, is only being used in the redevelopment plan at these locations. This is not a rezoning of downtown to allow greater height everywhere. This is very specific and very almost not shotgun approach. It's, it's very much a rifle shot on these particular sites only if we are able to provide for some sort of a centralized parking facility, which allows for that to occur. So there's kind of an interrelationship between those. You also see in this rendering some kiosks, tents, banners. The idea would be that you'd add some sort of overhead lighting and create almost a permeable ceiling to the sky. And in the background is a multi-level parking structure, which would need further study to be sized. It is not a public structure. It's not serving commuters like in other towns. It's not because you have demand for shoppers. There could be provision for a degree and we've recommended a public parking on the ground floor, at least at certain times. But the parking structure is primarily to support the residential redevelopment of these mixed-use properties up and down the avenue. Obviously, some employment parking for ground for commercial uses. And there could be other uses that are directed towards it. So that is the strategy behind that garage. And it's just depicted again at three and a half levels in this rendering. The, the final sizing and the height of it would really need to be fine-tuned and determined. There is one other building shown on the far right of this rendering, which is on the property on Raridan Avenue in track D, where the Bridge Restaurant is located presently. This is the backside of that block looking towards Raridan from Dennison up South Third, excuse me, North Third. And I think it's important to note that this has been an exposed surface parking lot for probably most people's lifetime in Highland Park today. So the whole notion of parking at this site, we believe, can be done, but done in a much more aesthetically and in a way that reinforces the character of this north side neighborhood, which is quite nice, but has that view when you look at it objectively. So the end of the parking structure is capped or bookended with a liner building so that you would not see the parking structure, where today you see a vista across an expanse of a parking lot. But you actually have a ground floor use, upper floor residences. The idea is to have that somewhat reflect the professional office across the street, help screen the garage. The garage itself, the parking structure, would have a ground floor liner use of some kind. And we've talked about in the redevelopment plan. We think that would be ideal for perhaps an art gallery or performance space that might also spill over and use part of the ground floor garage. We've done that with a building in a garage in a redevelopment project in, in Overton Square in Memphis. And there are some other communities that have used the garage liners as a way to basically do something that's a very public use. Some of them have called things like the arts garage. As we look back down Dennison to the south or to the west, excuse me, from the street, this is the remainder of the liner. So it's a residential scale. It is not a four-story building. It is not a five-story building with an terrace back. It is a three-story residential scale using verandahs porches, the other design vocabulary that's so prevalent, found throughout up and down Dennison Street and into the north side neighborhood here to try to really create a, a very different character and scale. We've tried to capture that as best we can in the design standards for track D. So there's very specific differences. What happens out on Raridan on each of those sites is a little different. Parking structure, the liner of it, and then the Dennison Street side of it, which actually has multiple design components, as you can see, shown here. And again, there is that multi-level parking facility and its distance, 1,000 feet is about a four-minute walk. You know, with crossing at intersections and waiting for lights, we basically indicated that all the way down to track A, you're within a five-minute walk of this centralized parking facility. Some communities have used remote parking and centralized parking as a way and as a strategy for redevelopment. I know that it's one of the components that's brought up a lot of questions. And one of the reasons the borough is at this point going to catch the, the overall parking management study up is to address issues that we've heard, such as concerns that people won't park in that location if they're in one of these redevelopment sites, they'll park in front of someone's home. So we know we need to address that. In fact, there's an intent to do that. So I wanted to just specifically talk at a very high level about the use bulk and design standards that are permitted. And this really speaks across all of the tracks. We are expanding permitted uses from the existing zoning in, and what's permitted in the existing redevelopment plan. And in fact, that is. And in fact, that is specifically one of the downtown, one of the downtown master plan strategies is to expand the variety of active ground floor uses to diversify the mix of retail service and entertainment uses, including creative maker spaces, artist crafts person studios, and real estate offices, better activate the downtown throughout all hours, add vitality, particularly in the challenging age of online retail and e-commerce. So that's an attempt to not just create more retail space that's competing with us trying to revitalize and maintain the revitalization of the existing retail space. We've also, in the bulk standards, the setback standards, we've actually increased some of the front and side yard setbacks from what exists in the current zoning in the redevelopment plan. In many cases, currently, you have zero setbacks. And we've gone in and specifically called for, in some cases, some greater setbacks, trying to craft and match some of the adjacent buildings and what seemed appropriate at those locations. But again, it's very conceptual. We also have reduced building coverage in some locations from the existing zoning and redevelopment plan. So we've actually shaped the building envelopes on these sites, again, at a very high level, to not be all the way out at the property lines, to not be all the way up to the front of the street over what exists under the current zoning. We've also, the existing zoning does permit multi-level parking structures in the C and PO zones. So where we are proposing that multi-level parking structure on Track D, majority of that does sit in what's currently zone PO, where, again, multi-level parking structures are permitted today. And then lastly, we've added in green infrastructure and sustainable design standards that are not contained in the existing ordinances or redevelopment plan to try to make these buildings really achieve a green and sustainability standard at some level beyond what we can under current zoning. Quickly to highlight some of the changes that we've incorporated based on community feedback. We had three stakeholder meetings in October. We had a meeting of the redevelopment entity where we presented this plan in November. We spent probably two months synthesizing a lot of the feedback that we've heard. So one, we've taken the plan from sort of, to allow it to be broken into phased, flexible development, so there can be discrete individual projects that might move forward before, for instance, all of the particulars of a parking structure or whether we even have a parking structure are resolved. So that's number one. Number two, there's a commitment to a more permanent public space on Third Avenue, north side, south side, some combination. We know that that requires dialogue and approval with the DOT, since Raritan Avenue is a state highway. We're well aware of that. Three, there's a limited onsite parking and/or reserved on-street short-term parking loading along Raritan Avenue in front of buildings. There was concern raised by the community. You know, are people going to come home with groceries? They can't park two blocks away and get them to their building. So there would be a way that would address that. And that has been built in. Again, we heard that loud and clear from the community. And then the plan also recognizes that centralized parking may not be built on Track D. So if that does not happen, as we are showing in the plan, that there is the ability to adjust density and development in the program for redevelopment. That means that most likely, some of the density and some of the height may have to be reduced because you won't have the sufficient parking supply to service that. We've also proposed in the plan that we can explore alternate locations for centralized parking. It may be, and we discussed this, mentioned this publicly, that it could occur perhaps in a later phase, one of the Phase Two portions of Track A, and not on Track D. So that possibility is contained within here. And also the fact that we may not build a multi-level parking structure is recognized in the plan. And then last, we reduced the height and indicated in design standards to control human orientations on the rear of Track C. That was in response to some of the neighbors on Magnolia Street in feedback we heard in October. So just to wrap up, process and next steps. These are sections of the plan. And I thought it's, I know it's thick and it's hard to read. And there's a lot of provisions within here. And many of these were worked on by Joe Baumann, the redevelopment council for the borough. But Section 6.2, the first five things I'm going to mention here, do not occur under existing zoning. One is the Borough Council is the redevelopment entity, which gives them the ability and certain powers and certain provisions that you don't have if you're developing under existing zoning. The first one, Section 6.3, is they get to select and designate redevelopers. 6.4, that section indicates that we can have a redevelopment agreement, which allows you to use all of the powers and controls. And there is much greater municipal control contractually by using a redevelopment agreement, which again, does not occur under somebody pursuing development as of right under the existing zoning. You do not have those first three controls. We also recognize that there could be amendments to this approved redevelopment plan. And we do anticipate that that will occur. We are, you know, certainly communicating that there may be, and we recognize in the plan that there are nearby and adjacent property owners. And we would like to see the plan expanded to include other participants. We had to start somewhere, but it was, the intent is that we hope other folks can participate. We hope that that parking structure, if it occurs on Track D, can have other users that would also help to underwrite it and make it feasible. Section 7.1 provides for a concept plan review by the Borough Council, acting as redevelopment entity. Again, that is a power we don't have. So before a developer, a redeveloper can sort of move forward into the redevelopment agreement and take advantage of the plan, we get almost a concept plan review that occurs, again, under the powers of redevelopment. That is not exist under existing zoning. And then 7.2, now we have the normal application for development. And 7.3, the normal planning board review for site plan that occurs. And this planning board has reviewed two plans during the past year and a half or two years under redevelopment plans. Actually, if we count the international market being built or finished right now on Raritan Avenue, there's three of them within the past two or two and a half years. So that process occurs with planning board reviews, Section 7.3. And one other point to note as just a housekeeping measure. And Roger, I think any resolution from the planning board, we'd like to suggest, recognize this. In Section 8.1, where we talk about the relationship to the Borough Land Development Ordinance, it indicates it's an overlay. And actually, it was intended that this supersede. And so we would like to recommend that the planning board make that recommendation to council, that we actually amend that section to indicate that this ordinance would supersede. So it would replace the existing zoning. And that would basically only allow these properties that are on these tracks to proceed under the redevelopment plan, with us, again, gaining those other sections of control and negotiation that are indicated in this process and next steps. Does it indicate one other thing? It's not staying in the plan, but I think that Joe Baumann, our redevelopment council, has spoken to it. We could be, we would be in a position with the adoption of the redevelopment plan to basically send a message to the development community that we're willing to entertain proposals to respond to this redevelopment plan on some of the tracks. Some of the tracks are controlled by the borough, like Track C in its entirety, a portion of Track A. And I know there's an effort to acquire more of Track A. So the borough is effectively has another layer of control that they don't do under a privately owned property that's taking advantage of the existing zoning. So with that, that really concludes my overview presentation at this point.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
I can stop sharing if that helps.
Yeah, maybe we'll get her. Okay. So at this time, I think what I'll do is ask the board if they have any specific questions or issues that they'd like to raise about what we've just seen. So Alan Kluger.
Yes, so not a specific question, but more a little. Ordinarily, I would expect a general overview presentation, Jim, on this plan because our goal is somewhat narrow as to consistency with the master plan. Except after listening to the council meeting from a couple of weeks ago, it was specifically stated that you only, that you were only giving an overview presentation at the council slash redevelopment meeting because you were going to give a much more detailed presentation and which I understood to mean, almost going through the plan in much, you know, in detail, you know, track by track, not just for our benefit, for the public's benefit as well. I think that's what the public's expectation was. That certainly was the way I understood what happened at the council meeting. So I'm not saying we have to go page by page, but I think I was expecting a little bit more of a, a more detailed presentation here, just given what happened at the council meeting a couple, a couple of weeks ago. So I don't know whether Tony wants to comment on that or Joe Baumann wants to comment on that, you know, based on what happened at the council meeting or Matt, you know, if you guys want to comment.
So Alan, is there a specific part of the plan that you would like Jim to go into more detail on? Is there a part of it that you would like him to discuss in more detail than he did just, just now? Is there a?
It's not just, it's not just me. I mean, I'm, I'm.
I understand. I know.
I'm just, I'm, I'm speaking based on what I heard at the, at the council meeting from a couple of weeks ago. And it seems to me Jim has just given the same exact presentation that he gave at the council meeting. As I said, ordinarily, if we were, since we're only looking at consistency with the master plan, I'd probably be okay with it and assume that everyone, you know, we've all read through, you know, the, you know, 70, 80, 80 pages. And we'd have our own, our own questions. But I just think now the public, you know, is entitled to a detailed presentation on, on the plan. So that's, you know, it's up to you guys, what do you want to do? But that certainly was, was my expectation going into this meeting.
Alan, I, I agree that I did not go in detail in each track, but I did add additional content and did speak to some of the provisions that were not, that I did not address at the council. But I did not go into them in detail, I agree, on a track by track basis.
So perhaps at this point, we'll continue with board questions. Perhaps that will bring us into more specifics about some of the detail. And then we can step back and decide whether we want to, you know, then go track by track, I think, and provide that detail, Alan.
Or, or that could be a recommendation from our board back to council to say that there should be a more detailed presentation done at a redevelopment committee meeting or at a council meeting, where, in my view, is the real appropriate place for there to be a very detailed presentation?
Okay. Patrick, did you have a question or?
Well, Alan kind of took a little bit of it. But again, I always want to ask the question of what is the planning board's role? And try to define that. And, and I just, in terms of consistency, you know, and maybe the, I'm speaking like for the public as well. You could have multiple plans that would come before the planning board that would still be, let's say, equally consistent. Would that be a fair statement? That, you know, there could be another plan drawn up that was, obviously, it's not, that would be consistent. I'm just saying that the consist, judging it consistent doesn't say it's the best plan, just that it, you know, we find that it meets the broad, you know, the outlines of the master plan. I'm just trying to wrap my head around what our, you know, role here is. And, you know, considering also the fact that so much of this will, like I said, depend on the parking structure, the actual developer that comes in. You know, I just want to, you know, kind of really define our role so that, you know, that the public doesn't have, let's say, false expectations or of what we were actually deciding or, you know, or not.
Patrick, if I can just respond to that to some degree, you're right. Well, I don't know. Let me be more specific. The role of the planning board at this stage, in my opinion, is limited. I, I think this is more of a referral role in terms of its, in terms of the consistency with the master plan. And I don't doubt that you're absolutely right, that we could bring in Plan X, Y, and Z. And, you know, Jim would be presenting those plans. And you could find that those are consistent with the master plan. The fact of the matter is, these are potentially not the only plans that could be consistent. But that's not what your charge is. Your charge is not in a position, you're not being charged with developing the plan. Your charge at this stage is to determine whether or not the plan that's in front of you is consistent with the master plan. Is that a limited function? Absolutely. But that's, that's where I see your function to be at this point in time.
And I may have a quick follow-up. What, what limitations or what does our refer, let's say, you know, we deem it to meet, it be consistent? And what does that allow or not allow the council to do? Because it would, they themselves that would pass the ordinance for redevelopment. Is that not correct?
That is correct. That is, in fact, what, what they, yeah, I'm still on, okay. That is, in fact, correct. That then allows them to meet their concomitant statutory obligation. They've referred it to you. They, in turn, if they follow Alan Kluger's suggestion, they will have a more elaborate presentation or not, as the case may be, at the, at the governing body level. They will presumably pass the plan. That plan presumably will then, at some point, get, get merged into a, an ordinance for, for one or more of the individual tracks. As you've heard, Jim was saying that what he'd like to do is this, this is, it's been my experience anyway, that these plans tend to be overlays. In this particular case, it is now the suggestion being made by Jim, and I assume that's either through his suggestion or at the suggestion of the council, that rather than this be an overlay, that in fact, for these tracks, that is the ordinance. That is the zoning for those tracks. So it's, it's a little different from what I've seen in the past. That doesn't mean it's inappropriate. It's just a different method. Nothing wrong with it, it's just a different method.
All right, thanks for letting me, two questions.
Sure.
I see Jeffrey has a hand up.
Yeah, you can hear me, right?
Yep, we can.
So in terms of the consistency of the plan, looking at the redevelopment plan, you know, Jim, you, you've identified a number of land use, you know, master plan goals, but really it seems like you're focusing on the land use component since what you're proposing is land use regulatory changes. But also, I think, I think that the inclusion of a parking garage and the inclusion of explicit mention of a parking management plan ties in. And I think, you know, ties in and requires, I think, that the plan, a touch on circulation goals in the master plan. And what I find missing and potentially, and a referral to the, to the council for revisions is to, because now you're going to have a parking garage, is to look at the impacts, potential impacts on pedestrian movements. You've got a, basically a parset, parking precinct, a radius of which people will be walking to and from the parking garage and the land uses that are part of that. The bike and pedestrian plan was adopted as part of the master plan. And there is no mention of that, of that bike and pedestrian plan in the redevelopment plan. No mention of, you know, complete streets or safer streets, of which would have to happen in, with a parking garage and increase in pedestrian activity to and from those other developments that, you know, the parking garage is supposed to absorb. And so I would ask. And so I would ask that you really look, look at the circulation goals, circulation recommendations of the master plan, the bike pedestrian plan. Go back into the, you know, to redevelopment plan and identify where, now granted, it's not, these are public right of ways and are not identified parcels. But I think it needs to be some connection to that and addressing not just the parking and the vehicular movements, but the pedestrian bicycle impacts of such a parking garage. And I think it could be addressed. The bike pedestrian plan actually in its implementation page says that you can leverage redevelopment to make those improvements. And I think some reference to that in this plan, I, you know, a nod to developers, if we're going to do an RFQ or RFP out and say, look, you know, pedestrian improvements within that quarter mile or whatever thousand feet radius, that's going to be part of something that developers who want to respond to an RFQ are going to have to have to take seriously. And I think, I think I hear we're hiring a consultant for our management plan. Where's our, why aren't we getting ahead of the game and start putting in these complete streets improvements, slowing traffic down so that when we do have a parking garage, if we have a parking garage, that it's, it's going to be safe pedestrians of all ages and abilities. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Is there? Matt, do you have your hand up?
I, I did. I just, Jeffrey, thank you very much for that. For that, that idea and suggestion that makes a lot of sense, I think. I will say that in the that this, the the complete streets and the and the bike and pedestrian plan are mentioned in the proposal that we put out for the the parking plan. So it they, they, they are in there and mentioned that they should be considered as part of of moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure that they were mentioned there, but perhaps they could be mentioned within the redevelopment plan as well. But thank you.
Steve Nolan.
So a couple of comments. I, I think that broadly stated that the vision and there are actually a couple of visions here that that are sort of alternative visions that's presented by this plan is completely consistent with what we've been trying to do, not just in this master plan, but probably in every master plan for the past forty years. And I, I think council needs to decide whether they're ready for the downtown to move forward or not. So I, I think that that is an important decision to make and that we can continue to sort of bump along and do little things here and there and say, why have things not changed? Or we can be a little more bold and try to move the downtown forward. And I do think that that's what our master plan has been talking about, and I think that that's what we should do. The the comment that Jeff made about looking at how is the pedestrian flow going to work and the bicycle flow? And I would expand that to the traffic flow and the parking. How's all that going to work? It's a little bit chicken and the egg because if the deck happens, that's one solution. That's one analysis. If the deck doesn't happen, that's another analysis. And so I recognize that that is a difficult thing to say, well, we want to study the traffic. Well, the traffic for what? It depends on what's going to happen. But I do think that there are a lot of merchants and even more residents who live in the area who are concerned rightfully about, well, what's going to happen to my traffic situation or my parking situation when this, whatever the this is, happens? And this is always the problem with redevelopment. This is a plan. It's not a, it's not an actual project. And so I would suggest or ask the council, think about that carefully in terms of making sure that the people in the area feel included and that at the appropriate time, when there's enough to measure, that there be a parking study and a traffic study that includes consideration of things like walkers and bicyclists. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the board who has a question or a comment right now?
Yeah, I would. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll come back.
Alan, Alan, you need to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Roger. On track C, there's no constraint on how big the building can be. At least that's my understanding. Currently, there's seventy-two parking spots with four of which are handicapped. What will be left? There is no constraint at this point. It could be all, it could be non. And I think that's a question for Jim Constantine.
Yeah, the, 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 the plan recognizes that there is a need for some of that parking to remain onsite. The details of that will need further resolution. Alan, you're correct, but there's not a specific number call. We did show some concept plans in October. And we also heard some feedback from stakeholders like the Reform Church that they could use even more parking, but there is, you know, other, other potential resolutions of how that might all come together. And who, who, who might be using a multi-level parking structure and things of that nature? So parking, yeah, the parking tends to be a continuously perfected art form in places that do manage it well. What you're doing at year one is different at year five, at year ten, you know, with with strategies. But you're, you're correct, that is an issue that there's not a specific number called for in the plan, but there's a recognition that there is parking there that services the uses that needs to be retained in some form or potentially expanded.
I, I would make the argument, these probably be expanded. You have merchants across the street on Raritan Avenue. Will people use that significantly? The church has more than thirty institutions that live in that building. And I don't think the borough wants to, in a sense, minimize the impact of the good, the culture and the good works it does. Related to that, the municipal parking lot there has roughly twenty-seven thousand square feet. North Third Avenue has roughly fifteen thousand square feet. North Third would seem to be not big enough for the farmer's market or probably for many other things. I mean, when the, the police department has their annual day out thing, that had the street and the parking lot, the Blue Horse parking lot, and that wasn't big enough. It, it seems, these are some of the culture things that make Highland Park, Highland Park, which don't seem to be happening to to be taken into consideration. So that at this point, there's really no constraint as to how big the building will be on on the municipal parking lot. Is that correct?
Correct. Every site effectively does have, there is some flexibility in the envelope, but that also relates to parking. And that relates, as Steve Nolan just said, what is the ultimate parking solution and where and at what level?
And there is, in my mind, almost a myth that everybody wants to walk into town. If you're going shopping, you probably want to use a car. Or yes, there are times of walking, there's time for use of an automobile. Electric maybe, but in a automobile. Okay. There's more, but I'll come back later.
Alan Kluger, did you have?
Yeah, I wanted to to follow up on on Steve's comment and, you know, as someone who was on the board since, you know, back in two thousand and five, I, I, you know, and was very involved with the two thousand and five redevelopment plan and all the attempts at redevelopment. You know, some, some have gone through, some have not over the years. I obviously want this to move forward and something has to be done. I, I don't, you know, I do a lot of walking through the neighborhoods and through town. And it's not a happy walk when you walk through a lot of, a lot of our downtown. It's not a pleasant, you know, not a lot of pleasant sites in certain areas and something obviously needs to get done. But I, I do have to bring up the issue of, and as has been made, been mentioned regarding traffic and parking. Not that I think it's something that stops the plan from from going forward, but yes, we can find certain lots of, you know, positive land use elements to say it's consistent with our master plan. But if you're, you know, it's possible, again, I don't know how big or how many cars this, this deck is going to accommodate potentially. But how do we know it works from a traffic perspective? How do we know we're not creating additional traffic backups in other areas of town and as we're pushing off some, you know, additional traffic into the onto the side streets? We also, as Alan mentioned, how do we know the impact on our current businesses? You know, what are their current parking needs and 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 use right now versus what's going to be available to them after this plan is put in space in place? So I would like to see some type of traffic analysis, parking analysis that's done as part of the plan now, rather than just say, okay, go ahead and and approve it now and we'll do, we'll get our consultants later and we'll do our traffic studies later to see if it works. There's just a lot of uncertainty. And again, I'm not looking to put, you know, a total stumbling block here or put a roadblock in front of the plan. I want this to move forward. But at the same time, I have to feel comfortable that it works. And I don't know that I can say it's consistent with the master plan. It could potentially be creating circulation problems, pedestrian safety problems, parking issues in other parts, you know, the downtown or for our existing businesses. And I know that they've been talking about doing these studies for a while, but we just haven't seen them. And again, I'm not asking for, I don't think I'd be looking for a, you know, fancy bells and whistles, you know, fifty thousand, hundred thousand dollar study, but at least something to give us some comfort that the plan, the plan works.
I'm sure if I could just, the, the last couple of questions lead to maybe a question procedurally that I thought of, and that is now directed to to Jim. You raised the issue that that there has now been contracted or speaking, the borough is seeking to contract a parking consultant. We now know that that parking consultant, based upon what Matt had indicated, is also going to be looking at pedestrian issues, Alan suggesting maybe even traffic issues. But the point that I'm making is, do you know procedurally how this, this plan is going to be proceeding? Will it be proceeding in advance of the end result of that study? Will it be awaiting the end result of that study and modified in accordance with it? Or will it be modified? Or will it be, this plan be advanced? And then the study comes out with then the expectation or the realization that there will be changes to the plan based upon that study. Three, three scenarios. Do you know how this works in relation to this study?
Yeah, and and I don't know whether Terry wants to address that. I think she does, so.
I would try if it's okay with that. I guess I'll tell you, my understanding was the the, the scope of work was issued, we are awaiting some proposals and qualifications to come in to try to see how consultants would approach this dynamic. I think one of the things we heard loud and clear and are in agreement with was the potential impacts on the neighboring communities and the parking, but also to Jeff's point, you know, what that dynamic could do and 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 want to manage any potential negative impacts and want to get their input. But the way I've been imagining, not having seen the response to the scope yet, is that they may give us a range of recommendations and approaches that we can consider for managing parking. And that could range from the ever popular, you know, paying for parking in certain locations, resident parking in certain neighborhoods, you know, this kind of suite of things, which I was imagining as being an integral tool to implementing this plan and evaluating the proposals that would come in from the development community, especially the ones that we would be soliciting for the properties we control. And we imagine it to be, we don't necessarily have every idea figured out and that we would get some good ideas from the development community, including input on whether or not they think the off-site parking works the way we've envisioned it here. So, you know, it, I wasn't imagining having it all tied up in a bow for this plan because I don't anticipate this, I don't know if we're calling it a plan or a study, frankly, and Joe Baumann, our special counsel for redevelopments on, he would remember that better than I. But that this, it would inform the development projects that we would be trying to to implement in this plan. And that's how I've been viewing it. And I think that's how we've presented it to council. But I don't know if Joe would want to add to that.
Yeah, Roger. Short answer is we would move forward with the plan. It is not contingent on the parking analysis.
Then, then if I can, at what point does the parking analysis play into this plan? If at all?
This plan has alternatives. I think as some of the members have pointed out, you can have a parking garage, you cannot have a parking garage. You can have parcels get independently developed or not independently developed. There's a lot of ways to tackle it. So that first place, we need to understand the base, the base conditions for parking because it may be broken. There's anecdotally stories about people parking in front of businesses and they're walking to train stations. That doesn't help Highland Park, for example. Whereas about people parking in neighborhoods that maybe shouldn't. So it begins with a base, this is the style gives us a basis by which we can then make some decisions about the projects that we may implement. We pick these parcels because we have lots of control over them. I know there's a consternation about the farmer's market parcel, for example, but if Highland Park wants to have development, we have to eliminate as many, many things that are out of our control as possible. And so we don't control met the properties downtown. We don't control what property owners decide to do or don't do. And that's why the first plan hasn't succeeded. And so we identified at least two parcels where we control the property. That's including the farmer's market. And we've developed a plan to try and make those happen now. Does that require us to replace the farmer's market and put it somewhere else? Yes, it does. But we can't build a project on a street, or we could put a part farmer's market on the street and build on the farmer's market. But those are all things that we'll figure out as we implement the plan. And so for today, we tried to pick four locations where we think we can have a likelihood of success and we drafted a plan that's flexible so that the governing body will decide ultimately whether there's a garage or not a garage, whether we put out into the market one or two parcels or a package, whether we try, how we try to work with the property owners and ultimately culminating in a redevelopment agreement and then back to the planning board for a site plan. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get out of the box. We're trying to get out of the, get this started and we picked these, we strategically picked these parcels for that purpose. But generally, get back to your original question, the parking analysis will set a baseline for us. And then it will be available to us to build upon that in terms of analyzing various alternatives that we may seek to have redevelopment agreements and then ultimately site plan applications.
So, so what you're
So are you?
In third, in twenty-five words, what you're saying is that you're looking, the council is looking to get the plan moved with the understanding that the parking slash pedestrian slash whatever plan will be used to assist in better understanding the flexibility that is necessary to implement the plan with the developers. So it's sort of like, I don't want to call it an amend, an addendum or an attachment to the plan, but it will certainly not be put onto the shelf and not be referred to, but rather be an integral part of figuring out what the parking arrangement is as the, as developers come through. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. And more importantly, that person or a company will be a partner with the planner and the lawyer in financial as we go through the process. So more, they'll be sort of a partner on the team as much as they are preparing us a, a single document that just guides us. It'll be more.
And maybe perhaps part of our record, part of our recommendation would be that before any parcel was done, heading towards a redevelopment agreement, that we would have that parking and circulation analysis in place, right? That that would be sort of a cornerstone piece for negotiating some of those, the first properties that that come along.
That those are the recommendations, but to us, we would, we anticipate doing fiscal analyses and fiscal impact studies and parking and circulation studies as part of a project for sure. So we'd welcome those recommendations from the planning board, certainly. Um, so we'd welcome those recommendations from the planning board, certainly.
Okay, is there anyone else? I see that, um, Pedro, you have your hand up.
Just a reiteration that, that parking is probably the key. So sooner than later, we should really come to grips with it because the underlying problem in my experience for the last twenty years is a lack of disposable income within close proximity to the downtown to support its businesses. And you, you can solve that by creating more density, more people in and around the downtown, and that's parking, and that's going to require parking. Or you have to provide parking for people coming from outside of town or from, let's say, further away than a few blocks. So, you know, like, like Alan said, I don't want to like say necessarily mean that this is, you can't accept the plan, but really parking and how to solve that seems to be the, the key or, or at least the foundation for, you know, whatever plan that's actually going to work.
I'm going to move to Kalidra who has her hand up since we have not heard from her yet, Kalidra.
Thank you. Um, so I know that we focused a lot on parking. And my contribution to that, to this issue is you, we're all assuming that the parking solution that we have presently is adequate. And I know that it isn't because there are many people who live in the apartments. Um, above many businesses on Raritan Avenue that have reported having a hard time finding parking and are presently parking blocks away. From where they live on Raritan Avenue. And the having adequate parking um, is something that I know a number of residents is looking for. But uh, my, my question is not about parking. I'd like to uh, refocus on the sort of loss and gain of public space. I know that we are discussing um, replacing the current location of the farmer's market and relocating it potentially to North Third Avenue and a stretch of North Third Avenue between Raritan and Dennison. And just, um, I'd love to have more information uh, in a future presentation that addresses how much of the space we're losing from the current uh, farmer's market area. That isn't only used for the farmer's market, but um, you know, at present is used for outdoor exercising classes. And there's various other recreational things that happen in that space, um, moving it to North Third Avenue. Like, what? I, I just, I kind of want to know a little bit more about that and the potential of expanding that space across uh, across Raritan Avenue to include South Third Avenue, even though I know we can't close off that section of Raritan Avenue. That a possibility as well as that being discussed.
So I'm going to, before, um, maybe Jim goes to answer that, I'm going to piggyback on that a little bit. So we can keep things maybe a little more concentrated. So um, like Alan Kluger, I've served on this board for many years and was around for um, the sort of the, the early days of of um, the last version of, of when we did develop our redevelopment plan. And I would say that um, tracks uh, I guess A and B are very much in keeping with the vision even back at that time. Which I think someone else has already said this evening. And very much in keeping with um, the consistency with our master plan in terms of um, the type of density, the look of the building, the, the, the mixed use, what's going to happen on the first floor. And I think that in those cases, it's, it's a lot simpler um, to step back and, and agree that, that, um, that's very much what we've been, what we've been seeking um, for years. And if, as um, Joe Baumann said, if it takes sort of the town taking more control of those spaces to make that happen. Wouldn't that be great if we could finally get some of those things going? But um, to piggyback on Kalidra's point, I have some like very um, I have more, a lot more questions about um, the track D parcel. And I understand that we could do a traffic study and a circulation study and a parking study, but it's still, um, there seems to be some, lots of land locked and roadlocked places. I, I like on face value, it doesn't compute for me in terms of um, that we would close a street off. And yet that's also the access to the only parking lot that you're making in town that's supposed to serve the other uh, three tracks. Well, and four tracks, including that one. So um, I, you know, I appreciate the fact that it, it makes a U around other properties and that there's already parking um, lots that, that I know I use pretty regularly um, behind those properties that seem uh, to be cut off. It's also not clear to me, when I read the plan, it's basically, I think what the plan is stating is that uh, North Third would be closed off occasionally, so it would be closed off. Um, I guess maybe Friday uh, mornings to afternoon for the farm market, it would be maybe closed off when um, Main Street was going to have their movie night or for some other special events. So I understand that that then allows people to, cars to move down that street and to access that parking. But then you lose the, the point of having a town square. So in terms of how this, that particular track meets um, uh, meet, is consistent with our master plan. I feel like there are a few loose ends there and some questions that, um, that in terms of, you know, um, seeking a more specific uh, presentation, I understand that these are concepts that we're talking about, these are our goals. But if your goal is to make a landlocked parking lot with a street that people aren't allowed to drive down, it's that, that in my mind is not really um, up, uh, an attainable goal. So um, I'm sure I may be misunderstanding aspects of it, I, I spent a lot of time with the plan, um, I still have those questions. So perhaps Jim, you could speak to, a- a- again, I, I understand we're not talking nuts and bolts because a lot of this is basically, it is scope, it's plan. It's, it's sort of the, the overarching concept. But I think in that particular instance, it's a little more than concept. There, there seems to be a couple of inpasses designed into the concept. So if someone could just clear those up for me or make me understand what I'm not understanding, I would appreciate it.
The, the, excuse me, the plan um, would allow for some um, movement to still occur on North Third. For instance, there could be uh, ingress from Raritan to the parking garage. I agree with your concern, Kim, is I, uh, my observation of successful um, parking locations, it's more when it's public parking is that there needs to be some way to get people to them easily. Now, this is mainly resident parking. But we have talked about a component on the ground floor that would be publicly available. By the way, an observation that came out of the master plan, um, and this sort of cycles back to try to address Kalidra's question as well. Is that um, there are parking problems with the existing farmer's market and where it is. In fact, there's dangerous jaywalking that kind of pulses out across Raritan Avenue um, with the activity of the farmer's market. So one of the things that we have indicated is if the ground floor of this garage was situated adjacent effectively to the farmer's market, that there could be some covered parking, there also could be the ability for the market to extend its um, months of operation, perhaps even into a quasi indoor situation under a portion of the uh, parking garage, which some farmer's markets use. So there could be kind of a covered market um, that could be a component of it. So there's, there's a whole bunch of details on that to be worked out on the size of the market. There, there are constraints on North Third alone um, in terms of the number of stalls that are in the current market. And Main Street provided some uh, you know, excellent comparison studies. There's also questions, do you use a portion of South Third? There's pros and cons to that, and I know there's some folks that don't like the idea of splitting. The other side of it is there are some conditions around the world where there are markets in downtowns that do have um, uh, traffic does run through them and part of that is it's kind of an immersive experience. So there's no right or wrong, it's, it's different approaches. If you um, to Joe Baumann's point, if you want to develop Track C effectively, you need to park it. And if you want to develop Track C and you do relocate the farmer's market, the, the old Borough Square concepts actually shrunk the, the amount of space available for the farmer's market to accommodate redevelopment. So the challenge is you can't take Track C and have it meet all of those things. You can't expand parking from what exists today, you can't maintain the same exact footprint for the farmer's market. Have redevelopment, so that's, that's the, the challenges that we're facing um.
So, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna butt in real quick. So for example, um, you know, I've lived in, in town for almost twenty-five years and I've seen that big empty park, you know, a parking lot that remains primarily empty where, where we're talking about making this structure. And I think it's probably a very common um, um, reaction is, hey, peo- why can't we use that parking lot, right? People want to use it, I'm not saying that's not a great place for a parking lot, I'm not saying why wouldn't we make even more parking there? I'm wondering why we're putting a festival street at the mouth of the only way to get into that parking lot. In other words, why wouldn't the festival street be on South Third? We've had South Third closed off as an experiment now for the last, you know, year, eight months or however long. Um, I, I'm just, you know, I, again, I'm not trying to really re- redesign the plan. I would like to just look, again, we're just looking at the plan for whether or not this meets the goals. I'm just wondering, one of our goals is to really where, you know, one of the major pieces of the master plan was to reduce curb cuts on Raritan Avenue for pedestrian safety. So now we're going to have um, let's say a deck of a hundred or two hundred cars. Which is a concentration of vehicular traffic needing to cross through a place that we're also describing for pedestrians. So I just, I, you know, there's a lot of things I like about this conceptually. I wish that there was, uh, you know, different ways to access that, that parking lot. A- and that there were different ways for the businesses that, you know, I would have to say, you know, we know, we all know Main Street struggles, there's been, you know, as someone said, lots of turnover, um, um, empty storefronts. You know, those three little storefronts that are nestled in that U, uh, uh, you know, they've been here a long time. Like I, my, my other concern is um, do, you know, I understand we're going to have to break some eggs, right? That's what happens and people sort of have to adjust to, to change, that's all fine. I, I, you know, I do think we have to be somewhat sensitive to the things that are working and, and making sure that, that we're not missing that stuff up. So I, I, I'm not saying I don't, I, you know, I think the idea of centralized parking is great. I think the idea of doing these infill um, parcels on A and B, that stuff is great. I, I think there's just some built-in flaws with, with having that festival street there. And again, may, maybe I'm not enlightened enough to appreciate how that would all come together. And I understand you're saying it's for residential parking, but it doesn't mean that if the farm market's going on Friday morning and my car is in that lot, you know? But now I'm driving through a farm market or not getting my car, you know, so I'm just, it just seems like an interesting dilemma. So, um, and I'm, I'm all, I'm bringing it up like specifically in terms of, does that meet the needs then of, you know, or the uh, of what our master plan calls for.
I just want to add, can I just add just to Kim, because I don't think you got a, I don't know if you got a definite answer from Jim. Like when I look at the pictures, it doesn't, of, it doesn't actually show where the cars would come out of the um, uh, the par- parking deck or where, how, how would they get out of the sort of locked in, you know, the, the little lots behind Century Twenty-One and um, and the bank and the barber and it, it just doesn't, it just assumes that the cars are going to get out, but it's not in the pictures, it's not in the, in the uh, you know, the, what we're being shown here in the descriptions. So it's not really clear even how much of a festival street do we have? Because if the cars have to be able to get out of there, um, it's just not that, it's just not that clear. And again, I'm not saying, yes, I was involved in, in the, the two thousand and five, you know, redevelopment plan. But at least there in the, in the pictures in the back, it showed actual, you know, showed you where the traffic was, where the parking lots were, exactly where the turning was, whether, you know, where, which street the traffic would flow onto and, and out of. So that we really have, you know, an understanding of, of how the, the plan would work. Instead of just, we'll take our word for it, it's going to work.
Jim, could you end up having uh, an access of, to the parking to avoid some of these problems on Dennison?
It, it's, well, that, that has been discussed and that was, that came out in some of the public feedback. And we, we think that that could assist and that, that comment did come from some of our stakeholder meetings. Alan, on page seven, we did not include the concept plans for the specific tracks within this document. But we did incorporate one on page seven of the redevelopment plan on the bottom of the page, which does show the parking structure. The, the access isn't indicated, but it's effectively on the north side of it, um, closer to Dennison Street um, uh, versus the liner. We, we are showing the access behind Providence Bank and there were nine spaces on the Providence Bank property that would be relocated within the parking structure. That is contained in the redevelopment plan, properties that are indicated. Um, but there is access to Providence, which then continues into the parking lot behind those other uh, three out parcels that Kim was referring to um, that run on Raritan Avenue, the inside of the U. There's also egress through the um, Providence Drive through Bank back to Raritan as well. And uh, in conversations with those, we did, we have learned that those, many of those property owners that uh, the, the access that's used for parking for their businesses does egress out the Providence Bank driveway. It isn't just uh, there's not really a bypass lane, there's an extra exit lane that occurs to Raritan today.
Right, now I do, I do see that.
Through curb cuts on to Raritan.
Yeah, yeah, and, and there are also are um, easements involving some of the properties in there, I don't want to get into deep, but that also are affected here, so.
Okay, is there, I see, um, Alan Williams, do you have your hand up?
One of the uh, additional uses of these, of the buildings was axe throwing. That doesn't seem like something that we, we really would want to have in, in the borough.
I'm sorry, Alan, what, what did you say, it shows what?
That an additional use, uh, not a primary, it's been additional use, is axe throwing.
Oh, axe throwing, is that what you're saying?
Which, you know, we might as well have rifle range. It just doesn't sound appropriate.
Yeah, we, that was situated under the indoor amusement businesses as an example. Arcades, axe throwing, virtual reality escape rooms and other activities. For better or worse, Alan, I um, share your visceral reaction to axe throwing. I will say it is one of the fastest growing and most popular uh, indoor amusement trends in North America. And I attended a, a down, a, uh, the largest street arts fair in Vancouver, British Columbia, three years ago. And the axe throwing line was, and activity was a huge draw, much to my surprise. And I was terrible at it, that's another story.
Okay, is there anybody else who uh?
Joe, did you have a thought?
All right. Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody, so the side of the parking garage is, you know, currently a private property owner who we've had limited conversations with. So um, even the, getting into designing it and what would be, how we built and what would go on top of it. It's, it's absolutely, you know, for, to, to come, that whole discussion and all effort. There's a long, between here and actually building a, a parking garage, including getting a private property owner to consent to that parking garage. So I'm, I'm just sort of pointing that.
So that actually brings to mind, um, Joe, let you um, kind of finish your thought with, with including this thought, which is in general, I understand the um, there's, there's going to be some random order to things in terms of, you know, these, after these um, properties are declared uh, potential, you know, if they are declared to be areas um, uh, in the redevelopment plan. developers are going to take interest. And then there's obviously this back and forth worked on to determine their plan. And that's going to happen in whatever order people take interest in whatever property. However, the the closing off of the street is obviously just going to be purely a town initiative, right? We're not, we don't rely on a developer. We don't rely on some sort of outside entity to make that happen. So I guess I'm curious, like, would that only happen if, um, is it track C? You know, when that happens and that's when when that that street is is developed? Or is that something that the town would sort of move forward on, establish that and then see how the parking? It seems like there's such a coordination that has to happen between that street and that parking that for you to kind of say, oh, well, we haven't really talked to the property owner. It's like, there's a plan on a piece of paper, like it 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 could have easily, just as easily have the driveway going out, you know, onto Dennison. So instead, we have two outlets, one for behind the bank and then one that would access that parking lot onto the street that we're proposing is going to be a closed pedestrian street. So.
Yeah, I I think we have to actually get DOT consent. So I don't think it's, you could say that we don't need to have anyone else. We could just do this. It's not going to be that simple, unfortunately. And so that's, again, part of the process that, you know, as we work our way through this, will maybe we have to move, we think about it, whether it could even be there or whether it has to be somewhere else or whether it has to move back off of Raritan. There's just a lot of dynamics that are a part of that. And it has to work with the garage and the adjacent property owners. There's real businesses there. There's a potential new project that blew away. So there's all these considerations. But until you have a, you know, a plan, we're, we can only have limited conversations with property owners. For example, we can't get into negotiations. So we're hamstrung by the lack of sort of not having this next step, this foundation, if you will, to move to the next level. So, um, but we're, well, it's not just, we just can't decide to close that street. We we'll be more involved in that.
Uh, collegiate?
So I would, I would just like to also talk back about Track C and the development of Track C and what would be lost in the development of Track C? Because I think something that I'm not hearing when we talk about the potential of closing off North Third Avenue either permanently or occasionally or regularly for farmers markets is just understanding what all goes into operating a farmer's market and the fact that vendors coming in for the farmer's market come in with very large vehicles that they have to have on standby. And presently, where the farmer's market is located, those vendors are able to bring their vehicles in, unload their goods, set up their stalls and operate throughout the day. If we move the farmer's market to another area and relocate it to the other area, we have to take into consideration the accommodation for those vehicles. And, uh, you know, the fact that if the street is lined with stalls for the farmer's markets to be able to, the the vendors to be able to sell their goods, where are all those vehicles going? I mean, some of those vehicles are not.
Have we done like a feasibility study for the, for moving the the market to that size, that that location? Does anybody have that answer? Oh, Terry?
I don't have that. No, I, the answer is no, but we have had several conversations with Main Street Highland Park about this very point. And actually, um, one of the employees who manages the market indicated he's very aware that there are other markets that have that challenge, meaning that the the large trucks can't just park there. And you you find other look, they know they have to get there early, offload and then move those vehicles elsewhere. We would have to figure out that location, but we're pretty confident we could do that. Do I have, and and we did go back and forth and we did see those schematics that that they put together. And it may be, you know, it is possible that it would be the same size farmer's market. You know, there there might be some some constraints, but we, I just feel it would be a good one. You know, we can make a good one. It may be different. It may not be the exact same format, what have you. And I'm also very confident that the organization is very creative and would be able to come up with some interesting solutions, but it may not be exactly the same. But but your specific question, collegiate, we did discuss that. And there are numerous farmer's markets in the state that don't have the ability to park those large vehicles and they've managed to accommodate that. And I think my understanding was they felt that that wasn't the biggest concern. They, the size was a concern that came up, but I think we're trying to juggle. I think this whole plan is a juggling of goods that we're trying to to find. And there may have to be, there's compromises everywhere throughout this thing. And but I mean, I just, I know we're all committed to trying to maintain.
Oh, yeah. You know? I mean, I think our farmer's market is a very magical thing that we have in town. And I I I know that, you know, when our farmer's market is up and it's going and we have, um, you know, local musicians playing and, you know, a lot of families come to just have lunch in the farmer's market. It's a very social thing. I feel like if you sit in our farmer's market for the whole of the day, you will see the entire town town pass by. Uh, you, you know, it's a, it's a great gathering place. And it's also, um, you know, for the local economy, a lot of small businesses are able to maintain their business by the draw that the farmer's market brings on Fridays and the vendors themselves. I've spoken to some residents in Highland Park that have considered starting their own business and having the farmer's market be the jump off for what they think they'd like to produce and to be able to do that in a way that's on a small scale, that's economically feasible for someone just starting out. Um, and I would hate to see us lose that. So whatever the solution that we come up with, whether it's the farmer's market staying where it is or relocating to a new location, I just want to make sure that, um, we take all of those things into consideration.
Okay, so I just want to, um, I see Alan still has a hand up. But so, but before, um, we move to Alan, I just want to say it's currently about nine thirty. I should have said this earlier, but I know I've been in, I've done a bad job in in the past of letting this meeting go on way too late. So we were going to have a ten P M curfew. I'm sure there are, um, I believe, we, I can't see, but I believe that there are people, um, from the public that would like to speak. So I do want to, um, uh, get to that shortly. So maybe, um, we'll have, uh, Alan's comment and then we will move to, um, to the public portion.
I've got, Alan? I've got one more also, so.
Okay, so Alan Williams?
Okay, I'll be real quick. On on, uh, Track B, why aren't we considering the Sunoco and the bigger bag? It it would make a package that where I think you could have actual parking there, uh, access though, uh, from the back.
The short answer is those property owners have not expressed any interest in participating in redevelopment to date.
Okay, thank you. Alan Kluger. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Did Alan want to continue?
Yeah, it sounded like maybe I cut Alan off.
What would we do with the Wolkovitz Pavilion? I mean, it's a hundred thousand dollars. It's valuable.
I I don't believe it was a hundred thousand dollars, Alan, just to, just to correct that. But, uh, when, when it went in, I, the conversation was that we would have to, we'd have to, this was always a redevelopment location. Um, and so we were aware and we will, we'll have to find a new location for it.
Okay, at some point, the the farmer's market area was going to be the Borough Square.
But I'm not convinced that the shape of that Wolkovitz Pavilion was exactly how that building was going to lay out. I I, it was a conversation we had with Main Street at the very beginning of that project that we we recognized would be something we'd have to face and we're committed to fixing.
Are you?
Okay, Alan Kluger.
Uh, yes, a question for, uh, Mr. Baumann and and for Roger. How often do you see redevelopment plans, at least from my view, with so many variables? You know, you know, we may do this, we may do that, we have to go to DOT. We don't know if this is going to work. This may work. You know, or or is that common? Or is is it more usual where everything is a little more, you know, set and and structured? You know, for in inside a redevelopment plan?
I'll go, Roger. It's okay. I've seen redevelopment plans are specifically targeted, drafted for a project that already is in the works, that completely designed on the visa property. And I've seen scattered site redevelopment plans that copus fifty, sixty, hundred and fifty parcels throughout an entire city, flexible, not flexible, sort of everywhere and in and although in between. Highland Park is, it were challenged because, um, so far, adopt a plan and they will come, didn't work, right? For fifteen years. So we had to come up with a new plan. The best way to succeed at redevelopment is to control as much of the variables as you can. So we identified two lots that we own. And actually, we own them because the governing body had the vision and force had to go buy them and are buying them. Otherwise, I wouldn't even own them. And then, you know, we would like, our our ambition, the ambitious part of this uh, plan is to build a garage and maximize development on the on the other parcels. That's an ambitious goal, um, because we don't control that private property and that private property owner may or may not, uh, work with us. And so because we know that's an ambitious goal and we didn't want to not have it on the table, it's in the plan. But we also recognize because it's ambitious and we didn't want to have nothing, because we shoot for the stars and we come up short, we've allowed flexibility on individual lots that would have parking on site, uh, because we want to succeed. So the plan has this ambitious plan that admittedly is challenging for all the reasons, logistically, legally, cooperation from a third party, all those reasons, it's ambitious. But we still think it's it's worth pursuing because of the value of maximizing density and putting more walls on the street. But we also didn't want to have that be our only goal because of how ambitious it is. And so we have these individual, devoted to individual parcels, um, two of which we control. And that's sort of the result of this flexibility, which I admittedly gives people anxiety. But for me, the the anxiety has to rest in the, in the confidence you have in your elected officials who will ultimately sign redevelopment agreements, will gather all the important information they need from planners and from consultants to make educated, smart decisions that preserve a farmer's market somewhere and get the development that they want to develop. And that's what redevelopment allows us to do that regular zoning doesn't. So, yes, at the end of the day, you are counting on the mayor and the council and those professionals to make a lot of hard, careful, thoughtful decisions in order to have this redevelopment realized. But it's flexible just because we want to be ambitious and realistic all at the same time.
And did you speak with any developers in putting this plan together? Like, I don't know, get a group together, not necessarily they want to necessarily invest in our town, but just to get ideas from them or at least say, do you think this would work? Do you think that in a community setting, you know, not a, an urban setting, or with a community setting, that people would be willing to walk, um, four or five minutes, you know, to a, to a structured deck, you know, from their apartments? Or just, you know, or just to speak with with developers to make sure that this, you know, the plan could work?
You're counting on a couple of things. One, my thirty years experience, Jim, thirty years experience developing with the development community.
Oh, geez, I got a quick.
Something's.
Joey, Joey, we lost it for a minute.
Yeah, you cut, you cut out. Can you just repeat the last sentence?
All right, um, so I said.
After thirty years' experience, you cut out.
So apart, you're counting on the experience that people like Jim and myself bring to the table, having practiced thirty years representing public bodies in very complicated projects and also representing developers. So that's part of it. Two, I have spoken to and have familiar with developers. I would say, that's too far to walk. If you don't have parking inside, I I won't do that project. And then you will find developers and say, that's manageable. I can, I can make that work. I think it's going to be, you know, the gamut of it. And maybe it would be a package deal. Maybe we would put the parcel, all the parcels out together and have some arrangement with the property owner to build the garage, doing the ball of them together. So how that's going to actually get in the process by which we make this all happen, again, is to be, to be worked on, frankly, but we, I said it already, I guess, but until we have the foundation of a plan, there's limits to how much we can go out into the, into the, with the property owners or otherwise negotiating because we don't have the powers yet to do many of the things we want to do.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, Matt, I'm sorry, do you have your?
Yeah, I just, I I just wanted to also point out that that, well, Joe said that the council and the mayor will be in the decision-making process as we move forward. I just also want to reiterate the number of steps that have to happen before there is any approved process. You know, uh, Jim put all of the steps out, six point two, six point three, all the way up to eight point one. So the number of public, um, comment periods after this plan moves forward is quite significant before anything happens. So I just wanted to to also point out that it's, it's not that the mayor and the council make the decisions on all the decisions henceforward. There's still a public participation process that will continue, um, all the way through. So I just wanted to add that, make sure that's clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I think what we'll do is open up, um, the meeting for public comments. The process is, I I don't, I guess Jen is going to see hands and she, or maybe there's some sort of cue. So Jen and perhaps Terry will be in charge of that. I will say, though, if you, uh, would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or select the raised hand button in the app. And then Jen, uh, will announce, uh, the board clerk, Jennifer Santiago, will announce, uh, your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. And then we're going to require that you, of course, as always in any meeting, provide your first and last name as well as your address. And then Roger will swear you in because you are, uh, giving testimony. And, um, the last piece that I'll say is I I don't really know how many people have their hand up. Jen, maybe you can report that out. But I will say, so nine people, so I will say, um, we want to hear from everyone. This board really welcomes, um, public input, comments. And I want to make sure that we have time to hear from everyone, so can be considerate of your neighbors. I I, if you have a prepared statement, I'm not going to cut you off, but, um, we are going to try to sort of keep to about a three, four minute, uh, max time for people to to make their comments, just so we can get everybody back in and still, you know, be able to address some of those comments, uh, before we have to adjourn. So, uh, Jen?
Uh, first one is Mark. You're unmuted.
Mark, I think you're muted.
I think he's still muted, yeah.
Yeah, you you are.
That's his own mute, not us.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Do you swear the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth to help you, God? Do you swear affirm to that fact?
Yes, I didn't think I was testifying, but yes.
Yeah, this is, this is just like Jim testified, you are doing the same. Would you be kind enough to give, excuse me, would you be kind enough to give us your name, spell your last name and your address, please?
Mark Liebeskind, L I E B E S K I N D. And I'm calling in from two thirty-three Raritan Avenue. I manage the properties, uh, from two thirty-three to two forty-one. They're owned by Julia M. Two thirty-three and two thirty-five is a multi-use facility, two retail stores, three apartments and the largest, uh, public assembly space in Highland Park. We're capable of holding two hundred and forty-seven people spread over two floors. The two retail stores are Covergirl Clothing and Somewhere in Time. Adjacent to that is another building, which is Midori Sushi in Hyunan Manor. And then adjacent to that is, it's currently an empty lot, that's two forty-one. So the first thing I wanted to, uh, talk about was traffic. I sent an email to Kim, Jen and Roger. I'm assuming it was not transmitted to the rest of you. But one of the comments that I did mention there was that the redevelopment plan has a specific requirement that, let me, if you don't mind, I'll just read it to you. It's NJSA forty A, colon, twelve A dash seven, adoption of redevelopment plan. And I'm going to skip the first paragraph. Excuse me, the second paragraph says, the redevelopment plan shall include an outline for the planning, development, redevelopment or rehabilitation of the project area sufficient to indicate, one, its relationship to definite local objectives as to appropriate land uses, density, population and improved traffic and public transportation, public utility. Public utilities, recreational, community facilities and other public improvements. Uh, the legislature used the word shall, that shall include. And that's considered a mandatory term. I'm going to cite Harvey versus Essex County Board of Freeholders. Thirty NJ three eighty-one at three ninety-one, three ninety-two is a nineteen fifty-nine case. So this plan doesn't include, for example, anything about improved traffic. And I know some of you have talked about that. And I think that you uh are clearly aware of the um, not an improvement to traffic. But the impairment of traffic, forcing traffic onto the residential streets. Uh, creating congestion on Route twenty-seven. So that was the first thing I wanted to mention. The second thing is that um there's significant opposition to many aspects of this plan. If any of you have looked at the. Stakeholder meetings or any of the other redevelopment entity meetings. Many people have spoken out to opposition to certain elements. One of those is closing North Third. And that's been discussed in some, some detail today. Uh, Jim talked about the easements from. Going through the um bank parking lot through the North Third. And Dr. Pareek's building, his only access to his property by vehicles is through North Third. Uh, Mrs. M has an easement through his property onto North Third. So. Um, and I've raised this question, this issue before, I don't see how you can close off North Third when people. Rely on access to their properties from North Third. Uh, I don't think Dr. Preak is going to agree to that. My understanding is that. Ballard, Hudson and Dr. Rebarber. And Mia Corbett, who owns three eleven, that they're not going to agree to it. So, but you keep talking about it and there's been no mention really of the opposition. Um, and then the other issue was that. I, from what I understand, the DOT won't allow a permanent closure of a street that impacts a state highway such as North Third. Um, these closures on South Third and North Fourth, these are a series of continuous. Temporary closures of ninety days. That's be, and that's how they've been managed to keeping these streets closed for the length of time that they have. Uh, so I don't even think you can really close off North Third or South Third.
I'm just going to interrupt to let you know that uh you're, you're, you're beyond your three minutes. So you might want to just, you know. Okay, I want to hear all your points. So, you know, maybe just.
Okay, I just have one more point. Thank you, Kim.
Right.
Um, and then there's been discussion about the loss of public parking. So the municipal lot has seventy spots, North Third. From what I've counted, has about eighteen spots. And this is used by residents. Not only just during the day and the businesses use it, but for overnight parking, because they really have no place to park overnight. So those are the adverse impacts that have not been discussed. And that's basically, uh, we rely solely on public parking for our businesses, our tenants rely on it. So I know you've talked about hiring or the administration's talked about getting a uh. A parking study done, but this is a significant adverse impact that hasn't been addressed. I don't know why there hasn't been any provision. In the plan to even, you know, preserve any of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jen, who do we have a?
Hannah.
Next.
If, if you would be kind enough, oh, good, good. You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth. So help you God.
Uh, I do. My name is Hannah Schostak, S H O S T A C K. And I live at one forty-six North Sixth Avenue. Um, I have three questions and an observation. First question, tract A, B and C on Murriton Avenue. How do you envision having uh, having an alternative of those properties having. On-site parking when they would involve curb cuts on Murriton Avenue? And state DOT is no longer allowing curb cuts on state highways.
Uh, why, why do you ask all your questions and then we'll, and then we'll sort of revisit if that's.
Okay, that's the first question for Jim Constantine or for Bowman or whoever. Uh, second, okay, so then the question is how realistic is it for that to be an alternative to the parking garage? Um, when is the parking, number two, when is the parking study going to be done? When I raised this question before, Bowman said that this was going to cost a lot of taxpayer money and it wasn't worth it. So now I'm hearing that there's going to be a parking management study and I'm totally confused. Is there going to be one or isn't there going to be one? And if so, where is it going to fit into the process? Um, and how is it going to be financed? And is that going to be part of the study? Um, track D, uh, question three. Why hasn't it been developed up until now? It's the same owner. Um, so how is having it be a redevelopment area going to affect its fortunes? Um, and also has anybody talked to the farmers? And other people who would be using, be relocated to the festival street. And finally, number four, I watched the fire on Raritan Avenue a few weeks ago. And the closed streets are still mapped and I saw fire trucks and mutual aid. Coming to um being dead-ended because they thought that the streets went through while they were closed. So how do you reconcile having closed streets that aren't mapped for other municipalities when we rely on mutual aid for fire? So those are my questions. Thank you very much.
So do we just, uh, should we wait till the end and maybe address? Um, all these questions or does Joe or Jim just want to, uh?
Well, I'll defer to Jim, but it seems to me if we could maybe, um. I, I've been trying to take notes, so I, Jim has too. So maybe we could get everybody in because of time.
Okay, and then we'll do a wrap at the end.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense. Okay, great. All right. So Jennifer, do we have um someone else from the public then?
Yes, Dan Stern Cardinal.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, can you, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name and give us your address, please?
Yeah, it's Dan, Daniel Stern Cardinal, S T E R N, space, C A R D I N A L E. On the addresses two twenty-one Harper Street. Uh, and I just, I have a pretty short comment. I just want to say that. From my reading of the redevelopment plan and the master plan, and I haven't read either document covered to cover. But um, I've, I've gone through both of them in some detail. It seems like the redevelopment plan is pretty well in line with the master plan. And. Aside from that, it seems like a very strong framework to build on and it, it seems like the right thing for Highland Park to try to get something. Kind of changed in terms of situation on Raritan. Uh, I think the key thing is, as uh I think Patrick said earlier. To have a vibrant downtown, we need just like more people that are there. Not just living, working, spending money, something. We need more people in that area. And we now know, uh, after decades of kind of getting it wrong collectively as a country, that the best way to do that is to build. Around people rather than cars. And this plan mostly does that. Uh, which is one of the main things that puts it in line with the master plan. And for that reason alone, it should, it should move forward here. Um, and just kind of commenting on the, the relationship between, um. For uh roads and parking infrastructure and things, it's paradoxical, but it's true that. The more car infrastructure you have in terms of like more lanes to the roads or more parking. Paradoxically, the more congestion you actually have, people end up kind of taking the signal that, well, we're building more parking, we're building more lanes, therefore we can. You know, that's kind of inviting more people to drive and it ends up making the problem worse in terms of congestion rather than better. So I'm going to be the guy who says that less parking is actually an affirmative good in terms of the goals that we want to achieve here. In terms of having a vibrant downtown where people are able to kind of interact on foot. And kind of go store to store and have more customers for our downtown businesses. What I'm hearing from a lot of people is somewhat concerning because it sounds like the all-too-common fate for these things of death by a thousand paper cuts. You know, we're, I'm really confident that, that the people on the planning board and redevelopment um entity. And the planners and developers can figure out the challenging questions of how to, how to root traffic. And how to deal with resident parking. I'm sure we can solve those problems while also. Moving developments forward that are going to revitalize the downtown. Is this framework absolutely perfect? For all the competing needs that we have in Highland Park? Of course not, but this is an early stage and it's just a framework. Nothing in it is set in stone. But is it an excellent start? To the goals that we want to accomplish? Yeah, I think it is. So I really hope that we're going to move it forward here. And get something done for everybody that lives in Highland Park. The status quo of the last few decades is clearly not working, as I think we can all agree in terms of. Uh, kind of the, the trajectory of uh Main Street. Um, and this framework is a better approach. So let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Do we have uh our next speaker?
Carl Pray.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give, oh? I guess you.
Hold on.
Okay.
All right, yeah, you, you hear it? You can hear me now?
Yeah, well, it's good, actually.
Hi, um, this is Mary Forsberg, not Carl Pray.
Oh.
All my.
Do, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
And if you'd be kind enough again to state your names, spell your last name and your address.
Uh, my name is Mary Forsberg, F O R S B E R G, three one seven Denison Street. And um, I, I, uh, I have to say that this is the first meeting I've been on these. Carl and I have been on these meetings since we are right in front of where the parking garage or behind where the parking garage would go. This is the first meeting that we've had that I have not come away from incredibly depressed at how idiotic the whole plan is. So um, you know where I stand on this. Um, yesterday I sent Jennifer Santiago and um Mr. Thomas a four-page analysis I prepared. On the May thirteenth planning board meeting and my comments, my comments were rejected because I was told that. Um, I could attend the meeting and I could state my opinions, but I couldn't give you a four-page analysis. In that analysis, I concluded that the planning board cannot and should not endorse the twenty twenty-one redevelopment plan for tracks A, B, C and D. Because it is inconsistent with the two thousand nineteen master plan. It's inconsistent because track D, the parking garage and the party plaza on North Third. Is not included in the two thousand nineteen master plan and has never been included in a single um plan in the past. Um, we all know that, um, in addition to that, um, the master plan recommended in several places. That the borough pre- prepare a master, uh, a parking management plan. And we know, all know that it hasn't been done. And the only reason it was done is that um. There was a little bit of pressure put on it. Um, and um. The redevelopment plan ignores basically the common practices that have been uh adhered to in the past. In order to build this parking garage. Um, the two documents in question are therefore, I think, inconsistent and should not be endorsed by the planning board. And I. Feel sort of very relieved that I don't think you're going to endorse it tonight, or I at least hope that you're not going to endorse it. Because there have been a lot of interesting and intelligent um questions. I would like my four-page um analysis included in the record for the May thirteenth meeting. Um, that I made available to the borough's website. I would like to send it to members of the planning board because you've heard from, you've heard from the developers. Um, but you haven't heard from a member of the public. And um, I'm not a developer. My husband's and, my husband and I live. Right next to where you're proposing a parking garage and a, and a party, party uh plaza. And um, I think it's important for you to hear from members of the public, not just from people who are proposing. For this and I'm really, really um. Uh, appreciative of the fact that we're not being held to three minutes. And I will, I will make my um comments very brief, I hope. Um, I had a lot of comments on things that people said. Uh, when they started talking about the five hundred people that were talking, you know, were a part of the master plan. That's five hundred people out of over fourteen thousand people. It's a very small percentage of Highland Park. Seven percent of those people wanted a better CBD. We want a nicer Main Street too. But the, this end of Highland Park is not the, I mean, there's plenty of parking in this end of town. You can park at Raritan, you can park at the, the right edge, you can park at Stop and Shop. There is plenty of parking here. And if somebody puts some pressure on Jim Polos. The former mayor who owns the parking garage, parking lot that you're talking about building a parking garage on. Um, you know, there, there is plenty of parking here. In, in the, you know, talk up to um the two thousand nineteen plan. Uh, they, they never asked whether anybody wanted a parking garage. Nobody, not a single person. Actually, no, one person said they wanted a parking garage. But nine percent said that really parking wasn't a problem. How, how is it?
Only nine percent said it was a problem.
Only nine percent said that parking was a problem. That's right. Now, it's interesting that all of a sudden, having done no analysis of anything about this plan, all of a sudden, they're. They're putting out an RFP for a parking management plan. I mean, that's really sort of amazing. Uh, I've asked questions about, you know, the parking garage. I mean, Highland Park claims to be like a certified green. Municipality is a parking garage that is not necessary. Uh, yeah, a, a, a green cert, uh, you know, sustainable thing. Um. The, yeah, I actually cross the Spanish up. So, um. The, I, I, I'm curious about, you know, some of the decisions like the international market, the whole new thing. Is to not, not require developers to put parking uh next to their, their locations. I'm curious to see if anybody's going to want to rent the space from the international market. And the other thing that I'm wondering is. Have, has the international market actually come up with alternative parking spaces? And what are you going to do? With all of the developers that um are going to be involved in this? How are you going to manage having them um make sure that their people? Pay for parking in this parking garage? So, um, anyway, the, the one other thing I will mention is that the professional office uh zoning. Um, is, is, um, allows for private parking garages. I don't think they're public parking garages. So I don't know if Jim Polos is going to build the parking garage himself, but I certainly hope that you're not thinking that. Um, residents of Highland Park are going to be building this garage and paying for it ourselves. Cause I don't think very many people. If given that opportunity to do that, they would not want to do it. So I, I appreciate it. I, I appreciate this meeting. I appreciate that you didn't end exactly at eight thirty with, uh, you know.
Nine thirty.
Or nine thirty, just allowing, well, the other ones were eight thirty, just allowing people to actually speak. Um, and that there has been some actual discussion about this.
And how do we give you the?
And I would also like to send you my analysis of this because um I've spent a lot of time looking. At reading through minutes of various meetings and things and I um. I have written this analysis and I would like to send it to you. So I don't know exactly how to do that, but um. Uh, if there's a way to do it, I'd like to.
Let, let me just respond to one thing, uh, two things actually. First. Um, you, the statement that the developers have presented their plan, there's no developers on this site. Mr. Bowman. Uh, Mr. Constantine are not developer representatives.
Okay, right.
Town representatives, borough representatives. There are no developers that are available. Your, your plant, your, your four-page document is already in the hands of um. Uh, Jennifer, and it's actually, I've had it and I've read it. Uh, and the fact, the fact of the matter is that what I did not want to have happen. Uh, is that your document would be coming in. And that there'd be no opportunity uh to uh discuss with you what your positions were. Now that you have testified, I don't have a problem uh with the idea that, that you end up uh having your document made a part of the record. But that's because you have testified, uh, and that's, that's the exception to the rule. So I will, I will inform, well, Jennifer's on the, on the call, so I will talk to her tomorrow about how that gets distributed. It is not, and, and by the by, it is not the members of the public's responsibility, nor is it, should they. Attempt to contact members of the board directly. That would be absolutely inappropriate. That would be just as bad. Uh, as, as um having the document uh come to a board member and then the board member relying upon it and then nobody. Uh, having the ability to um be present to defend that document. So uh, that would be a, a, a critical defect in terms. So uh, that would be a, a, a critical defect in terms of any kind of a review. So I'll talk to Jennifer about that distribution.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. So Jennifer, who, who do we have next?
Randall Sol- Solomon.
Sir, if you could, um, I, I can't see, but the only person I know of that, well, now I don't see anybody.
No, we don't.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, there we go.
All right, Mr. Solomon, if you'd be kind, oh, okay. Sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
My name is Randall Solomon. I live at three thirty-one Felton Avenue. Spell my last name, S O L O M O N.
Thank you, sir.
So um, as I understand it, the, you know, the process here is that the development plan lays out kind of what we would accept, you know, what we'd love to see. Um, puts big stakes in the ground for things that we would want and not want. But then we have to work with actual developers um, who are going to spend their own money to develop their own plan. And a lot of the little details, and they're not little, they're big details, but a lot of these details will be worked out with an actual developer who's willing to put up his or her money to do studies, to work with DOT and other folks to buy, you know, to buy properties um, and then create an actual plan, an actual plan that would be submitted uh, and go through extensive review, um, public review, and then review with the professionals. Um, so I'm very much okay, and I, you know, and I accept Joe Baumann's premise that we need to approve the plan, generally, we need to approve something and, and let them get going. Um, and let the process where um, you know, we um, an actual plan starts to be created. Um, and I think things like the parking deck, um, you know, will the parking deck work? Will people use it, you know? Um, yeah, those, no, no developer is going to come in here and propose to build a, a residential development that requires that parking deck um, without having done a tremendous amount of study as to whether or not people would actually park in that parking deck. Um, and so, you know, again, there's a lot of time for these questions to be worked out, and we have to get started. So I accept that premise and I support the general concept of the plan. However, um, you know, at this phase, I think the job is not to solve all these problems, but to pit, you know, sort of put our big stakes in the ground for the things that we want and that we really need, and make sure the plan um, is, you know, defining those things. And I am concerned about kind of the town square. Um, you know, one of the, one of the things I was excited about for redevelopment was that we could have a better town gathering place. Um, I think the, the sort of Main Street lot is okay, you know, but the, it's, you know, it's, it's a parking lot, you know, um, a- and it wasn't really made for the purpose. I think Main Street's done a great job of programming it and turning it into something that's really wonderful. Um, but I think in the plan going forward, the, the, a town square should not be something that's an afterthought. And we say, oh, we'll figure that out after we accommodate the developer and everything else. I think we need a really good town square. Most of the plans that I've seen significantly shrink the, 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 the footage, the, you know, the acreage of land that's available to be programmed. Um, and so I don't think that the, you know, the festival street option um, works for all the things that people want to do. And I also think that um, you know, we're going to see a significant decline in the amount of cool stuff that's happening downtown if our town square becomes a flex space where we have to compete with cars and people complaining about traffic and have to coordinate with the police every time we want to use it. So I don't, I think that is an important detail that needs to be worked out. We need to make sure that we've got a farmer's market that, and I saw the, the maps that Main Street put out there that show that how, you know, how many tents and how much square footage would be available for the, the different proposals. And it's pretty stark how little is available on Festival Square or Festival Street or whatever. So I think, what do we want out of redevelopment? One of the big things we want out of redevelopment is a really good town gathering place. And so I think that's something that really ought to be thought through. Um, and that, that's a, that's one of the stakes that you should be put in the ground prior to this movement forward. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jen, do we have um, our next speaker?
Next, I believe, is David Cooperman. I can't see it. Hold on.
Jennifer, I think we're clicking on top of each other.
I didn't touch it.
Oh, then I. Okay, uh, so, sorry about, I thought we were working together. They may have lowered their hand, Jen.
Oh, David and Monica Day.
Um, can I ask whether or not both of you are going to, to testify or just one?
This is Monica Day.
Oh, okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Would you be kind enough to state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address?
Monica Day, D A Y, four twenty-seven Cedar Avenue.
Thank you.
Um, the um, redevelopment plan is not consistent with the master plan. The master plan does not have any mention of a centralized parking facility. Um, the only, the only mention of uh, off-site parking is in from the twenty nineteen master plan update is in the prepare a parking management plan element of the land use recommendations. And that was um, the language that was quoted by Mr. Constantine in his opening remarks. Um, and since that language is part of a prepare a parking management plan element, it is not part of the master plan, and therefore, this redevelopment plan is not part of the master plan. Um, it was news to me from Mr. Constantine's presentation that there is now an RFP for a parking management plan that was not at all anywhere in the uh, draft redevelopment plan that was published on the website. There was a mention in that plan, in, in that document about that it would be useful to have a plan. Um, I would strongly argue that this redevelopment plan should be put on hold until the results of the parking management plan can be incorporated. It's entirely possible that this parking management plan uh, and even, even accounting for this magic uh, par- centralized parking structure still would uh, that the management plan would conclude that all of the additional residences plus um, parking for activities for shopping, for people coming to the park, farmer's market, for all of the intended uses of that parking garage at the current or at the proposed redevelopment density would exceed the capacity of that parking garage, which would then push um, push parking onto the local streets, push parking onto the private parking lots such as the Stop and Shop and Rite Aid parking lot, and would quite honestly reduce the quality of life in Highland Park. For all of these reasons, I would argue that, or I do argue that the ma- that this redevelopment plan is presently not consistent with the master plan and that it should be uh, it should be delayed until the parking management plan has been uh, developed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jen, do we have our next speaker?
Uh, Sasha Rudy.
Uh, do you swear?
Hello?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Would you be kind enough to state your names? Excuse me, spell your last name and give us your address, please.
Sasha Rudy, R U D I E, two forty-seven Cleveland Avenue, Heritage Highland Park. Uh, I just wanted to voice my support for the idea of redevelopment. I'm a huge fan of transit-oriented development, which is what this is shaping up to be. I do, however, have concerns. I think the town definitely needs a facelift for some of the older buildings. I don't know if the proposed buildings need to be five stories. Or, you know, I, I kind of object to the lobbies and workout spaces over storefronts and mixed-use spaces on the first floor. And I also object to making existing residents pay for parking at the garage. Uh, I'm concerned the varying heights of the buildings in the town would be out of character, considering most are two to three stories at most. Um, is there a reason why the parking garage isn't in track C? Uh, I worry that pedestrians on North Third will be in danger being so close to cars frequently coming and going, you know, also exhaust. Um, C is larger and more central to all the different tracks and public spaces. That would allow North Third, Track D to have a longer, safer farmer's market and community area. Uh, is it possible the track D parking lot spot could be the new farmer's market space with an event slash community space building there nearby? Um, I think Randall Solomon touched upon that best. Um, I also support the idea of a jitney to transport people from Highland Park to the train station. I think with proper execution, the town could have the charm and appeal of Metatchen and Somerville with the closed-off areas and the encouragement to shop and stay and gather. So, that's my two cents.
Uh, great, thank you. Jen, do we have our next speaker?
Henry.
I don't see.
Um, it looks like he dropped his hand.
Oh.
I'm gonna.
There he is. All right, so I think the next up is um, James Nichols.
Okay.
Okay, is.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr., uh, sorry, do you swear, swear or affirm, excuse me? Swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth? So help you God.
I do.
State your, state your names, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
James Nichols, N I C H O L S, two thirty-two Harrison.
Thank you.
So I, I think what I'd like to do in the interest, interest of time, I, I referenced the commentary documents that uh, the design committee of Main Street prepared and the board approved. Um, I would like to enter that into the record if uh, you can do that at, at your discretion. I'd like to read the cover letter and uh, and, and especially draw people's attention to the plan document that's attached at the end, the physical map that uh, analyzes the farmer's market impacts. And I could walk you through the actual document itself, but I think in the interest of time, I won't do that. I would like, the reason why I would like the members of the board to have a look at it is I think we as volunteers tried to answer a number of the unanswered questions that have been discussed tonight. And so it might help flesh out, you know, the issues that maybe still need to be addressed, so. If that's acceptable, I'm just going to re- uh, read this cover letter quickly. Um, I'll edit a little bit in the interest of time also. Uh, we did submit this uh, commentary to the uh, Borough Council and the, and our liaison, uh, Matt Hale uh, and Terry, as they were working through the preparation of this plan and Jim constant time, we really tried to be collaborative um, throughout the process, and in general, we are in favor of redevelopment, especially as it would positively impact the businesses who really are our constituency as Main Street Highland Park. Um, the commentary was prepared by the design committee of Main Street, reviewed by the full board, and conveyed to the redevelopment entity in late December of twenty twenty. The document has been updated to indicate specific areas where the redevelopment plan has responded to or incorporated our input as well as areas where our concerns have not as yet been addressed. We've also included site diagrams that were prepared to specifically address the feasibility of proposed alternate locations for the public plaza that accommodates not only the weekly farmer's market but a wide variety of events and activities throughout the year. These events and activities have increased in scope and success every year and have helped to sustain the viability and vitality of the borough's commercial business district over two decades or more. Um, and I, I should emphasize that um, the two kinds of events, you know, we talk about the farmer's market as obviously very impacted, but I want to draw attention also to the spontaneous events that happen at the town square, and those are distinct in the sense that one is scheduled and uh, and the other is spontaneous, and so the way that interfaces with a closed street is worth being born in mind because a spontaneous event can't happen in the middle of a street that requires street closure. Um, so taking, together, the commentary and attached documents represent major areas of concern that Main Street has regarding the proposed plan. First, our most obvious and significant concern is the direct impact that the plan would have on Main Street's programming and operations, including the farmer's market space, the Main Street office, Borough Square event space, and the pavilion, and the many events, both planned and spontaneous, that these resources support. We believe that the plan's failure to make adequate accommodation for our operational needs would challenge the ongoing viability of our organization and our program, undermining our ability to support our local businesses as we collaborate to recover from the pandemic. Our second area of concern with the proposed redevelopment plan is born out of the longstanding role that Main Street Highland Park and the design committee in particular have played in promoting and safeguarding the aesthetic and urban design qualities that make Highland Park unique and economically viable as the funky, urbane, and walkable place that we cherish. Our members have devoted many valuable hours of effort and considerable professional expertise to this cause over many years, and preparing this commentary is just one part of those efforts. In this role, the commentary speaks more generally to how the proposed plan will impact the commercial business district and the borough overall, and to specific issues and elements of the plan that we believe should be addressed now, rather than waiting for the subsequent review and approval of individual projects. We conclude by supporting the redevelopment of the commercial business district in concept, but also by recommending that the development of track A could proceed independently while the more difficult issues proposed by tracks B, C, and D are more thoroughly studied and resolved. It's our hope that this information will help the planning board in its consideration of the proposed redevelopment and its likely impact on the future of Main Street, the commercial business district, and the borough itself. Signed by myself, Marcus Schiffman, co-chair of the design committee, Jenny Chapman, our, our vice president of the board, and Rebecca, our executive director. And the document itself is fourteen pages of kind of detailed questions about all aspects of the plan, specifically those things that we feel like should be addressed now rather than waiting for individual developers to address them because they really transcend the individual, individual tracks, but speak to the holistic combination of all of them. Um, I should also mention uh, and I should also mention that there was an attachment that was prepared by our executive director, which specifically highlights all of the contributions of Main Street annually. Really, when I was listening to this presentation, what I was thinking about is that on Fridays, when we have the farmer's market and when we have these other events, it's exactly the goals of this plan, which is to have lots of people on the streets. We draw people from surrounding towns. A lot of things we'd like to have happen seven days a week, at least we're having one day a week part of the year. But we all, but in addition to those events, so that attachment is worth noting. And then in addition to that, there is a plan, if this could be shared now, that would be great, but I don't think there's time, but we, the the graphic that we attach is a, an analysis of the si- comparative sizes of the existing farmer's market space, point seven eight acres compared to a reduced uh, area that could be developed on track C, also allowing redevelopment of part of the site as well as the sizes and scales of the uh, farmer's market, what it would look like on both a part of North Third as well as South Third. Um, and the big issue there, I think, is uh, we're really. And the big issue there, I think, is, uh, we're really talking about reduction, depending on where the street closing occurs of from sixty-plus vendors down to thirty-two vendors. In the worst-case scenario, but, um, a lot of that depends on the specifics of street closure. You know, how much of the street could be closed and those intersecting driveways being maintained or not. But I would also, again, reemphasize that the farmer's market is something that can be scheduled to happen on Fridays. It's happening in increasing amount of the calendar, uh, growing from the spring into the late fall and now almost to the end of the year.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, to, to wrap things up, just because I, I have an eye towards the, 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 the time here.
I'm good. So my, my last thing is really to come back to this idea of the distinction between the farmer's market and the idea of a town square, which is where unsponsored spontaneous events can happen without being scheduled. So, thank you. And again, my request that this document, these documents be included in the official record. Thanks.
Thank you. So, um, Roger, I guess, uh, the same would apply as it did, um, for Mary Forsberg, that you would, since, uh, Mr. Nichols has made testimony that will distribute those materials?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, Kim. Um, I, I apologize, but Jeff Pearlman texted me his apologies. He had to leave the meeting. He didn't know, he, I guess he has my phone number, so he, he wanted to, he didn't want to leave.
Well, let the record reflect that, uh, Mr. Pearlman has left the building, so, okay, thank you. So, um, Roger, with an eye towards the time here being, we were gonna end at ten. I think we'll wrap things up, let's say by ten thirty. What, what do you, um, propose in terms of, of where we're at and, and, uh?
Well, it, it is clear to me, I think that the members of the public have been heard, um, there have been a lot of discussions, the, the board, the board's function, as I understand it, and as I've explained in the beginning of the meeting, is to make a determination as to whether or not the plan is inconsistent with. I always liked, I would have liked it to be consistent with, but nonetheless, the language of the statute is to determine whether it's inconsistent with the master plan. And, and the language specifically says, uh, which are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning those inconsistencies or any other matters as the board deems appropriate. So, you can, uh, either solicit, uh, through the discussion for the board, you can end up seeking to have a motion to determine whether or not it is inconsistent or it is consistent, or it is not inconsistent, uh, or you can end up having a motion that says it is, it is not inconsistent, but you have the following recommendations, uh, to be attached to your, to, to the, to the motion. So those are.
And are we looking at this plan as, um, in other words, it's, it's only a plan that includes A, B, C, D, and we can't, uh, we're not, or, or because each tract is different, are, are we sort of determining whether each individual parcel or tract is consistent or inconsistent?
Right, I think that's really up to the board. I think if the board feels as though the overall plan, uh, is, is in, is not inconsistent. Hate using that term, such a double negative, but nonetheless, um, you know, you can do it that way if you feel as though, parcels A, B, and C are consistent, but parcel D is not, you could, uh, indicate that. Uh, if you feel as though that the plans are generally consistent with the master plan, but you have certain recommendations. For example, there has been some suggestions made, uh, which I know that Jim has made a suggestion, uh, as part of his presentation, that, um, if you're gonna make a recommendation, that the recommendation be that the, this plan ultimately, not today, but ultimately, uh, become a, uh, uh, into a zoning ordinance that would supersede the existing ordinance, not an overlay. And there's also been a suggestion, uh, that I think I, I tried to, uh, put into a kernel that would be, uh, that it would, uh, include a recommendation, uh, that the, I'll call it the pedestrian slash parking slash, uh, bike study uh, be, uh, in place prior to any developer agreement, recognizing again that there are no developers right now, uh, that, that the idea is to try to get a plan, as Mr. Bell suggested, uh, to get something in place so that there can be the beginnings of, um, some discussions. But without the plan, there can't be. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a little bit of, uh, you know, some from column A, some from column B. I wish I could give you, uh, it's either a, a yes or a no vote, but there seems to be a number of different options.
Okay, so, um, I guess normally this is then when I would kind of take the temperature and determine whether people felt that they, um, had made a determination as to whether they believed that the plan is not inconsistent, um, with the master plan and felt, and would feel comfortable, I guess, with the caveat of maybe a few recommendations.
I, I have a few other comments before we get to that, just to throw out.
Okay, okay, jump in then.
I, I don't know, I don't know how others feel, um, and Roger, maybe you could also chime in. Do we have a sense of whether some of the, the information that was talked, uh, that was, we heard testimony about, but we haven't seen the actual documents? Whether that would impact, um, our voting on, on whether it is inconsistent, whether the plan is inconsistent with the master plan? I think there is maybe up to three documents, you know, that are out there. I know people, uh, the public spoke about it, but we haven't actually seen it. So I, I don't know whether, what impact that would have on our, our ability to make a decision tonight.
To the extent that the, uh, the, the documents deal with the issue of jurisdiction, I don't think they will have a determine, uh, uh, an impact.
I, I wasn't talking about jurisdiction.
Well, I think he's talking about, let's say, the Main Street.
Yeah, I wanted to be clear. So, that's number one. Number two, with regard to the others, you had, you had testimony from Mr. Forsberg as to, um, uh, essentially what was, uh, contained in her four-page summary. She outlined the points that she had made, um, uh, you know, I, I cannot get into your minds individually as to whether or not, uh, reading those four pages will be, uh, much more informative than, uh, than listening to what she had to say uh, tonight. Uh, the same is true with regard to the Main Street, uh, uh, plan. It is, it is much more detailed, it is much more, uh, there are many more pages, there's fourteen pages of it, and then there's some addendums to it. So, uh, but I do think that Mr. Nichols did certainly outline, uh, I think pretty well the information. Uh, he obviously did not read all fourteen pages. So, uh, I can only, uh, surmise that they made their best attempt to give you their thumbnail sketch, whether or not those documents will influence your vote. Uh, who am I to say? I can't get into your minds.
Yeah, Ter- Terry was.
You still have, we still have four hand raised, four hands raised.
Oh, okay. Well, I just asked one question, as long as you were just talking about Mr. Nichols. Terry, was, was Main Street involved in the, uh, drafting of the plan? Or did you have meeting?
We had several meetings and consultations with Main Street. Throughout the whole process, we had many meetings with them.
So you're, you're, you're familiar with the, um, the plan that Jim is talking about then, and the, and, uh, the recommendations?
I, I am, um, and, and I, yes, I mean, I've, I've, I've read their concerns, I've read their, their, um, plans. I think that the document has changed in, in many ways in, in reference to that. Um, you know, that one of the things that they have asked for is, is to make it, to have the, the, the tracks more separated than they were originally, and that was, that was something that Main Street thought was a good idea, and we agreed. We thought that was also a good idea, um, to have a stronger commitment to a, to a, a, a public space. That was a recommendation. Um, I, 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 you know, I, I, I don't think it's everything that is in the Main Street document, um, is in the plan. And the reason for that is that many of the things that are in the Main Street document have to do with the organizational functioning of, of Main Street, um, which is, I think, different than, than redevelopment. So, I, we certainly had meetings with Main Street, we certainly considered and, and valued their opinion, um, and incorporated many of the things that Main Street asked for. We didn't incorporate everything, um, in part because some of the things that they are, are discussing and asking and talking about, um, really are about the functioning of Main Street as, as an organization, um, which is, I think, things that, 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 that are not, you know, germane to the, to the redevelopment plan, so.
Right, so, so after having, so after having read the, their document that they've put together, is there anything material, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but is there anything material in there that you would say, yes, I would, after reading that and hearing you, um, I would make some material or significant changes to the plan as it's written today?
So having read the plan, I would not, and, and I would not, because part of the, part of the goal of this is, as, as Joe said earlier, is, is balancing, is, is, is trying to figure out how are we gonna get more people down on Main Street? And is the farmer's market gonna stay exactly the same way? I don't know. It's good, it, it, it can't, and still have more people down on, on Main Street. So, um, you know, I, I don't think that there was anything that I read in the Main Street plan that, um, other than the things that I mentioned. You know, they, they did mention that they would like to have more flexibility for, um, one track to move ahead of another. That's in the plan. They did mention that they would like to have the potential options for onsite parking. Um, that's in the plan. They did mention that they would like to have a stronger commitment for, um, for, for a, a, a public space. That's in the, in the plan. So, you know, those are the things that we, we looked at the conversations that we had with Main Street. We looked at them and, and those are the things that we decided that, um, were, were germane to the plan, and that's what we added to the plan.
Okay, so, I, I feel like we're in a bit of a predicament here, because it's ten thirty, and I, we still have four people from the public. Well, so, I, I mean, I, I'm unwilling to, um, sort of keep letting this creep on, because it will be midnight, and we will still be here listening to people, and, and that's not, um, something that I'm willing to do to this board, and, and quite frankly, to the public who, um, you know, want, want to get their piece heard as well. So, um, I guess I.
Kim, I, I, I think we do have an obligation to review some of the documents that were suggested and continue to hear from members of the public, because I don't think we've heard of everything that people have to say. We have, at, at one point, at least fifty participants in this webinar, and for every one person who wants to speak, there's another ten people who are not speaking, who are listening very intently to everything that's going on here.
Right.
You know, I, I will say, from my perspective, I think we'd be best served on a motion to continue to the next meeting and pick up this discussion again at that time. I'm not sure that I, you know, at this moment, I will say, just from my, where I'm sitting, I do think that the plan is not inconsistent with the master plan, from what I can see. However, I'm not a fan of all the provisions that have been presented, especially with lots, you know, parcel C and D. That being said, I am a big fan of redevelopment and encouragement, and putting this catnip out there to developers to encourage them to come in, make plans, make proposals, and work out those elements. And I do trust in our redevelopment committee and our town council to work with those developers as those opportunities arise. However, having put my opinions out there about my feelings on, on the plan as it sits, I'm not sure I'm ready to vote tonight, given how many more opinions of the public there are out there we haven't heard yet.
Right. A- and I would agree with that, I, I guess, um, which is sort of what I, uh, thank you for answering, because that was what I was kind of, uh, trying to get a sense for, is how comfortable people would be, um, coming to some sort of vote this evening. But I also have the question of whether we want to try to, um, since there are, but now there's seven. When there were four, I was contemplating whether we would continue with public comment, but, um, being that there are, Jen, are there still seven out there?
There's six.
Uh, I, I also agree with, uh, with Rebecca as well. I mean, combination of, of the public yet to speak, and for us to see some, in some of the information. And maybe by the time our next meeting comes around, we'll hear a little bit more back from, um, from council, uh, the redevelopment committee and, and Terry in terms of responses to some of the concerns that we've raised.
Okay, so, uh, Matt?
Can I just ask a procedural question of how are those concerns that have been raised tonight? I mean, I've got notes, but how are those concerns, do you want to convey those, or how will those be conveyed? Um, I mean, I guess the, the, the question is, is that, that, I, I don't think that anyone has said that they think that this plan is, I'm, I'm gonna torch the language, inconsistent with the master plan. No one is, no one, I mean, that's, I, I think there's some questions. Okay, fair enough. I, but I think that what are the questions is, is as important? What are, what are the, you know, what are the areas that, um, that you would like addressed? Or how would you like them addressed? And, and that would, some guidance on that would be, I think, pretty helpful.
Well, I think we have to let the public tell us part of the answer, and we don't have time to finish that discussion tonight, which is a big part of the problem as far as tonight, especially given that we took the position that we're very clear that we cannot and will not communicate one-on-one with members of the public outside of the forum, this public, open forum, where we have full disclosure and transparency. So now the people have the opportunity to engage with us and tell us their concerns, and now will submit supplemental documents they'd like us to see. Maybe something new will come up, and I, I'm not ready to shut down that line of discussion when there's still so many more comments that people want to be heard for, and it is ten thirty-eight. And I think we need to wrap things up for the evening.
And, and also, Matt, just from my own, you know, my own questioning, as I said, I, there's a lot about this that I think is really good. There's a lot about this that is exactly what we've been looking for, but I, but at the same time, I, I do see some a, a flaw that I, I, I am not imagining just some negotiating, getting us around. So when you're saying, well, what would it take? It's like, uh, you know, it would just take one of you, it would take you or Jim or, or Joe or someone who, uh, obviously has experience with this to just say, oh, this is how, you know, this is how that's gonna be handled, and, and I'm not, I, I feel like I'm just not getting that, that sort of, um, input, so. Um, a- a- and granted, I'm one person, everyone else can feel differently, but, but I'm just saying, you're asking, well, what would it take? It's like, it just.
No, I, just to be clear, that's not what I, I wasn't asking what it would take. I was asking, uh, what are the questions? Right? And so the, I mean, the, the, we've had a lot of discussion about a lot of different issues, and if those can be framed in a way that we could respond to, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
I'm not asking what it would take to get support. I'm asking what are the questions that are unclear? And I, I, so that's, that's.
Let me try at this late stage at, uh, ten, now ten thirty-nine, to see if I can frame some of those, i- i- if, if I can. I tried to take notes. Uh, I, I think that one of the questions that has been raised is the viability of, uh, closing off Third, North Third Street, and the, uh, inner, and, and its interplay in that closure uh, with the parking garage, whether or not that can actually work, uh, given the fact that, uh, it is intended to be for uh, use on a regular basis, and yet there's only one access, which is at, uh, which is on North Third. So that's a question. Can that question be answered by, uh, providing access to, um, Denison? Uh, Denison access that, that alleviates that concern, uh, that, that's, that's one issue. The other issue that I think has been raised, maybe not so much by members of the board, but by members of the public, is whether or not, um, the parking garage concept is something that, that, um, is consistent with, uh, the, the master plan. There seems to be a sense that some members of the public seem to feel that it, it, it is appropriate, and others obviously strongly feel to the contrary. But I think, and I don't know that that's necessarily, that's just an issue that's been raised. I don't know that that, I think that's frankly something the board's gonna have to wrestle with, not that, um, the, uh, town council or the, as working as the redevelopment committee can. the town council or the as working as the redevelopment committee can really respond to. I don't think, anyway. I I think that there's also the question of the public space that has been raised by both members of the board as well as the public, giving that possibly a higher priority in terms of its lo- location to the extent that I recognize Joe's point that you can't, you can't put specificity when you don't have a developer. That's been my experience, that when you have a developer, you come into a redevelopment plan, you get get some of the specifics and negotiate with them, and then you come to see if it all fits together. This is more, this is a different kind of animal. And I understand that that's why there's a need for flexibility, and I think the board needs to understand that. But my point is that the the one of the issues of flexibility is how much emphasis do you put on that public space? That should that become more emphasized in the plan? And and should there also be more consideration with regard to how the ambiance of the farmer's market should be dealt with, similar to the public space? Should there be a greater sensitivity toward that? And giving it a higher priority in terms of the plan, so that when it when when the plan gets approved, Joe and and the committee and Jim can then go to a developer and indicate, these are all the things we want, but be aware these things are important to us. Don't lose sight of them. So that that's maybe the ideas that that I thought I heard that came out of this meeting tonight.
I would, I would agree with you, Roger. Excellent job, kind of, I think, doing that synopsis. I I would just expand on your last point, which is that the thing that I heard several people say is, is there actually a difference between the town square and the farmer's market? In other words, we're sort of conjoining those things as if that is one entity, and maybe there's a way in which there's a place that where the farmer's market might take place, which is different than what that town square place is, that that they sort of behave a little bit differently, and maybe they can't in this plan be the same thing, but we could still develop both of those things. So with that, did anyone else hear anything that we want to make sure is added to that list that Roger didn't just outline?
Oh, can I just add one procedural question on on the front page?
It's too late. It's sorry, you're done.
Sorry. I've used up.
So actually, so Alan, before you move to your procedural question, on a procedural note, I'm feeling anxious that I have not closed the public portion of the meeting formally. So I'm going to just let everyone know that we are going to close the public comment portion of the meeting at this time. And as we wind things down here, but that we will obviously, when this board meets again, have ample time for public comments. So thank it. Thanks to the public for joining us and coming and and giving those comments. So.
And I think that it's what you're going to be saying at the end, so that nobody leaves misunderstanding. We're closing the public for tonight. It looks like the meeting is going to be continued until the next meeting, which I believe is the 10th of June so that if you still have concerns or comments, there will be an opportunity to be heard. You're just closing. We are just closing the meeting for tonight because of the time.
That's right.
My picky question was, the front page of the document says endorsed by the planning board on whatever day. We didn't have that language in our previous redevelopment plans. I don't know, is that is that a correct language that should be used, that we actually endorsing it? When and if we get to that point?
Never even thought about that, Alan, and I'll I'll think about it.
Not I need an answer tonight. Just just I didn't want to forget about it. Just because one member of the public actually used that language endorsed by the planning board. It triggered my memory about that it was on the front page. And just Matt, in terms of, and we've spoke about this, you know, before, just I still would like to hear more. I don't know how the other members feel about specific circulation around and traffic around Track D and about park parking, not necessarily as much about whether there's going to be enough parking for the new developments that are proposed, but what impact by building on all these tracks could have on the existing businesses and the existing, you know, operations of the town? While we may.
And the residential areas.
The residential areas around them. You know, and just to make sure, again, that it works. I mean, it was news to me just hearing tonight that that the Reformed Church has a big use of parking spaces back in, you know, in the back of that lot. Or that, you know, I think Kalidra had mentioned that there's you know, a number of people who live on in the downtown already who don't have places necessarily to park. So I think that's that's kind of news and and hearing from businesses close to Lot C, Track C, who feel that they are going to be, you know, impacted negatively by losing the the parking that's all over there. So I just want to make sure that we have some responses to those.
Okay, thank you.
Well, as I can interrupt, I'm sorry.
Sure, of course.
The idea here is maybe they're going, and I'm saying this to to Matt and to Jim and to Joe, that I don't know that these necessarily are are responses, but I think these are issues that, you know, the board needs to wrestle with. And and if you do, if you guys have potentially more information about that, it would be helpful. But I think these are the issues that the board eventually will need to wrestle with.
Okay, so I think that do we have to do anything formal to carry this?
No, but I I just want to be, this is not a noticed hearing, so we don't have to carry it without notice, blah, blah, blah. But I do want the members of the public to know that this meeting is not over. It is over for tonight, I hope, but it is not over. Generally, it is, it will be carried until the 10th of June, 7:30, same, I assume, the same format as we've had today. And and if you want to get more information, check the website.
Okay, thank you. And my guess is that we would most likely open with these, any more feedback provided on the the list of items that Roger just enumerated, and then we would maybe move right to to public comments and then so that we had enough time for that.
And I think that maybe the the ground rule ought to be that I don't know who those seven or six or seven people were. But if these are, you know, if this is repeat comments, frankly, I think that what you ought to be doing is just focusing in on people that have not spoken and given new comments. And then if you choose, only if you choose, then you can go back to somebody else that's already given a comment. Or alternatively, as is suggested by some of the board members, after you read some of the documents, you may want to question a member of the public if they participate as to what they had in mind when they read, when they wrote the document. So I didn't want to just a constant, you know, oh, by the way, I forgot something. Oh, by the way, you keep on going. Why? So.
Okay, so then also, given the hour, we had just a some minutes, and then we had a memorization of a resolution. Do you know, Roger, that Justin subdivision more, whether that's pressing?
Well, I, since you may recall that I did not have it available to last meeting, so I I would, to be very frank, with all due respect to Jen, I'd rather defer the minutes and approve the resolution if you're going to do something at all.
That's what I'm saying. So so there is an urgency to approve that resolution.
Only because it wasn't, it should have been.
Right, at the last meeting. Yeah, okay. All right, so we will, we'll wait on the minutes and Jen had, of course, distributed the resolution P 2021 dash O three, which was a the applicant was Jason, Justin LLC.
Kim, Joe has his hand up.
Oh, yes, Joe. Sorry.
All right. I just wanted to remind the board or my attorney, I'm not your lawyer, of course, but there's a 45-day response. You know, you're supposed to respond within 45 days of the referral, the plan back to the council. So I just want to make sure you're taking into consideration your timing.
We understand that, Joe, and we are hopeful that the that you are going to convey to the redevelopment entity, which of course is the council, what has happened here tonight and that there has been legitimate discussion and earnest discussion by this board and that they did not want to go to the wee hours of the morning. But both you and I have done that. My all-time record is 2:30, 3:15 in the morning, which does not lead to good, good results. So I'm hopeful that we reckon that we recognize that the that the governing body recognizes that we're trying and that we will come to a conclusion, and I think the board wishes to come to a conclusion at the June meeting.
So does the June 10th meeting leave us within that 45 days, Joe or Roger?
Probably not, or else he wouldn't have brought it up.
So then, so we would then be determining that we have a special meeting? Is that what we're saying?
No, I don't think that's what Joe was, well, maybe he is. I'll let him talk for it, but I.
I mean, you know, I I'm just anxious for us to get the cross ball rolling. So of course, I, the governing body can extend a period of time and they'll decide what they want to decide. I just wanted to make sure that again, I'm not your death attorney.
Right. Thank you. Well, thank you for for putting that out there. And I guess, right, that determination will be whether you'll extend that period for us or whether we need to have a special meeting in order to to meet the 45 days. Terry?
I just, I just, because I'm adjacent to Jennifer, I know there were some other applications in the in the midst, and I just would ask that you consider that as your you know, as you think about whether or not if you can handle this.
Our schedule, sure.
At a future meeting.
I think this should have a priority. I agree.
I just don't want to be bumped.
No, no.
Well, you wouldn't be bumped, right? Okay. Okay, I'm putting my head back down to read, so you'll have to yell if someone has a hand up. Okay. So basically, I guess we need to make a motion to accept resolution P 2021 dash O three, which was Jason LLC, which was a subdivision at 236 South 11th Avenue. I know the resolution has been distributed to the board, and I'm sure everyone's had a moment to look it over. So if this time, if anyone has any comments or corrections or and if not, I would accept a motion to approve the resolution.
A motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
A second?
Seconded by Steve Nolan. Jen, roll call, please.
Mr. Brusher?
Yes.
Ms. Haddhazy?
She nodded, yes.
Oh, she's muted.
She said yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Kluger?
Yes.
Mr. Linares?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
We have to abstain?
Mr. Nolan?
I think I have to abstain as well.
Mr. Pearlman? Oh, he left. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Hammond?
Yes. Okay, so we really, we, the only other thing on our agenda is that we sometimes have reports regarding either from Scott regarding zoning and building or from me about the rehabilitation screening committee. I have no report because we have not met. I think we could table unless anyone has any burning urgent questions for Scott regarding something in building or zoning. So, okay, so do we need to, I guess, what will happen is we'll determine whether or not we need to meet sooner based on our other items on our agenda or whether we'll get an extension. My microphone is about to die.
Right. So I think we can, and I think the only thing needs to be done at this point is.
Can everybody hear?
Yep. Yes. And I think now that now that there's a problem with the chair's hearing.
Okay.
Oh, so you're back.
I'm good. Okay. So with that, I would I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rebecca. All in favor, please say aye. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Good night. Thank you for your time.
Yeah.